Good morning, Los Angeles, and happy election day. Welcome to the Los Angeles City Council. Today is election day, Tuesday, November 7th, 2006. And we are here in City Council chambers, John Farrow Council chambers, room 340 of City Hall. Want to welcome all the members of the public and our viewing audience as well. We are broadcast each meeting on Channel 35, L.A. City View, your city channel, and we are rebroadcast in the evening on the tape delay. We are here every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m. Pursuing to council rules, council members should be in their seats at 10:00 a.m. to begin those meetings. We are also broadcast via our city's homepage and over the Internet, where you can catch live streaming video of the council meetings at www.lacity.org, where there is also a wealth of information about our city departments, about your elected officials, and also about critical city services to improve the quality of your life here in Los Angeles. Lastly, you can also listen in on our council meetings by calling council phone, which is a service and audio coverage of our daily city council meetings or our committee meetings, and that number is 213-621-CITY. We invite public comment here in City Hall, or if Van Nuys is closer to where you live, you can go and testify via closed-circuit television, which we see on television here. We also meet the first Friday of the month in Van Nuys City Hall in an effort to bring city council closer to where all residents of Los Angeles live. And next, or this coming Friday, a week from Friday, we will be meeting in San Pedro. Again, part of our continuing effort to make sure that city council reaches out to as many people as possible. We now have a quorum, so with that, I'd like to ask our city clerk to call the roll.
Cardenas Gruhan, Weezer Labange, Padilla Parks, Perry Reyes, Rosenthal Smith, Vice Western, Zine Garcetti, ten members present in a quorum, Mr. President.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. First order of business, please.
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Rosenthal moves, and Mr. Zine seconds. There's no objection. Those minutes will be approved. Next item, please.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Labange moves, and Ms. Perry seconds. If there's no objection, those commendatory resolutions will be approved as well. Next item.
And, Mr. President, this is Tuesday, and there is a flag salute that is adjourned.
Okay. It's time for a salute to the flag. With that, I'd like to ask Council President Emeritus Alex Padilla to please lead us in the pledge. If I could ask everybody in chambers to please rise for our pledge of allegiance.
Please rise. Place your right hand over your heart. Begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Padilla. And next order of business, please.
Mr. President, do you wish to take up public comment at this time?
Sure, we'll take our general public comment at this time. Like to invite forward to speak today Addie Miller will be our first speaker, and then after that, Richard Robinson. Welcome to City Council. You'll have two minutes to address the council on general items, not on our agenda, but under our jurisdiction. Welcome.
Thank you so much. Does the two-minute start now? Okay, thank you.
Go ahead.
Dear council members and mayor Antelo Veragosa, first, I want to thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak to the members of council for the city of Los Angeles. I firmly believe all of you have the constituents within your heart, and there are times you have to trust others who make you promises that they can help you to help the people. To my knowledge, there is a program that gives tens of millions of dollars to developers, and I'm focusing on the downtown area lost to refurbished buildings. They, the developers, developers, promise you to make some of the units tax exempt. Then the developers, after receiving the money from you, find it costing them money, then they go back on their promise to you and want the units placed on market value. They go back on their word to you. Is their conduct breaking the law and seem to be adding to the homeless populations? For instance, who receives, the people that receives tax-exempt units are harassed, intimidated, their privacy violated constantly by the developer-management company in order to force them to move. Also, I have seen the Los Angeles County coroner remove several deceased bodies within the past six months from a development that is on the program or is receiving tens of millions of dollars. What is going on in downtown area of city of Los Angeles? I would appreciate if there's anyone out there that could come up with a solution to this problem, please help us look into the developments in downtown area of Los Angeles that are on the program of receiving tax money and violating procedures. I don't know who the councilperson of the Fifth District, Fifth and Spring, but I'd like to give everybody a copy of this statement.
Thank you.
And also, we're going for the mayor.
One of our sergeants-at-arms will take it just to your right.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, Ms. Miller.
And thank you.
Okay.
Please look into the mayor.
And we'll make sure we get you the information of who that council member is. Okay. Richard Robinson is our next speaker. Welcome, Mr. Robinson. Good to see you again. You have two minutes to address the public and the council.
Mr. President, members, Richard Robinson. In 1971, when I entered this chamber, Sam Yoder was mayor, and former mayor Bradley was the city councilman. After losing the city council race in Michigan, I left Michigan and made California my home. I brought my city manager out of Ann Arbor, and we built two rescue missions in San Diego. Sir, I'm 65 years old. As time passed, I helped move the old rescue mission at Main and the Union Rescue Mission, the Los Angeles Rescue Mission, the Midnight Mission, and asked that you build the drop-in volunteers, the Volunteers of America Drop-In Center. You, the city council, helped me to build the Los Angeles Men's Place, the lamp. Now I need your help in building what former San Francisco mayor Willie Brown calls CAT, the Community Awareness and Treatment Service, with a MAP Mobile Assistance Patrol, computerized vans that travel throughout the county and assist in bringing into a centralized facility, a comprehensive facility for homeless in San Francisco. Willie and I are friends. He sort of led me for years through the morass of red tape. Sir, now I need your help. At Fifth and Main, right there at Main and Fifth, is a perfect location for a community awareness and treatment service, the fulcrum around which to solve the problem with an ancillary map, Mobile Assistance Patrol. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Robinson. We're next go out to the San Fernando Valley, to Van Nuys. Bruce Darian will be our first speaker there.
Good morning, City Council. President Garcetti, it's election day, as we all know. I voted this morning. I was going to talk on a topic regarding the Justice Department, but instead, I'm going to go on to Prop R, which was the city council member term limits. And I think that it's mischaracterized here by saying that there's term limits when there already were term limits, and it confuses the public. And I know for myself, my mother was confused by it because she says, wasn't there already term limits of two terms? So, you know, the way this was drafted, I think it was done a bit deceptive. I think that the council members, those of you that have done your work and are capable, I think that you can do it in eight years. And to go on to 12, the problem I see with that is, is that there is manifest corruption in the city government, as well as other levels of government, and that it breeds tyranny by extending the terms. Now, that's not to say, obviously, that all council members are corrupt and that all your work is corrupt, by no means. But time breeds corruption. It allows people to make alliances with special interests that are damaging the interests of our city. And those special interests have big financial gains, profits to be made, and they're able to coordinate with individuals that have been around for a long time. So, I'd ask the voters to vote no on R, not to extend the term limits from two terms to three terms. And that's by no means signifying that there's any councilperson particularly that has violated a particular law. But I will say that the time that I've been here and calling upon the city to take action, I can see by your inaction, you've sent a clear message that you're not willing to perform your duties of investigation regarding matters of corruption within the city. And I'm sure this is just one example of corruption in the city, as there's many that are affecting the people of Los Angeles. So, really, election day, the time is people to come and be heard and cast your votes. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Darian. And just as a reminder to any folks who are interested in passing on information for investigation, there's the Ethics Commission at lacity.org/eth or ethics. And there's also our City Controller's Office, which, under the charter, can take up those matters, and we certainly encourage people to refer any matters there. Matt Dowd is our next speaker, and after that, it will be Sharon Brewer back in the Valley. Welcome, Mr. Dowd.
Thank you very much. Nice to be back. Just wanted to mention something about Barnard luggage, Mr. Council President, too, if you're paying attention. One of the employees from that business was quoted right here. She said that you said it's never too late, or you proved it's never too late to incorporate a small business in a gigantic development. Maybe it is going to be too late in the next couple of days. Venice Beach, I'm one of the outlaws. I just want to point out, I'm not an outlaw. I have no criminal record whatsoever. I've never been in trouble with the police, ever. The city of Los Angeles gave me a permit to sell incense at Venice Beach, but then they turned around and said, oh, no, you're not allowed to sell incense anymore after issuing the permit. It's unethical. We had an issue here on Friday of Van Nuys about children running around in the council, too. I saw that on the video. And one of the council members jumped up and said, they're a family-friendly council. I don't think it's appropriate. I don't think it's well-advised to, you know, we've seen what can happen here, the corruption, even a pattern of corruption with the council president here of his dad giving him an illegal campaign contribution. That's why I'm against Prop R. And then they turn around and blame it on other members of the family, and I don't want that happening to anybody else. So, we're not...
Sir, our rules of the quorum are very specific about addressing individual members and slanderous comments.
I haven't been talking about you. I'm not talking to anyone in particular. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dowd. Sharon Brewer is our next speaker out in the San Fernando Valley. Welcome, Ms. Brewer.
Hi, Sharon Brewer. First, I want to take and clarify my statement that I made on Friday with regards to Wrecker Parks and the city council helping kill a grebe that had swallowed fishing line at Lake Balboa. What I meant to say, or I didn't do, was that when you know about a problem that exists and you do nothing about it, I feel that you're just as guilty as the person that is actually creating the problem. So, I just want to go and clarify that, that it wasn't anything personal, just a statement. I would also like to go and say that I have been before the city council a number of times about issues within your jurisdiction, namely the Encino neighborhood council election challenge and also problems at Lake Balboa. And only once, out of the many times that I've been before you, have I had anyone come and talk to me about a problem that I've brought to your attention, and that was Councilman Labange, when I came and talked about the brown pelican that had fishing line around its wing that was from Lake Balboa. What I would like is, I would like to have a meeting with CD-6 over at Lake Balboa on a weekend and see what can be done to help with the situation that is out of control at Lake Balboa, mainly the fishing, the injury of the birds, and having no municipal code that protects the birds at a park. And when I go to the polling place, because of my experience here, I am going to vote no on Prop R because I feel like the council members are not listening when I come and tell them an existing problem. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brewer. That closes our general public comment for today. Madam Clerk, if we can run through the agenda, please.
Yes, Mr. President. On the regular agenda, item number 13, before beginning the regular agenda, there's a request to continue that matter for two weeks, and the new date would be November 21st.
Okay. Colleagues, is there any objection to continuing that till November 21st? If not, so ordered. Next items, please.
Items one through three are items noticed for public hearing, and they are street lighting district ordinances.
Okay. We will open and close those public hearings. Anybody wishing to, are we supposed to continue the hearings on those, or?
No, those can be voted on today.
All right. We'll open and close the hearings. Anybody wishing to call those special? Seeing none, let's open the roll on those. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Fifteen eyes.
Those are approved. Next items, please.
Next items, Mr. President, are building and safety items, and on items five, six, seven, and eight, the department has advised that those matters can be received and filed inasmuch as the liens have been paid.
Okay. I'll move to receive and file those. Anybody wishing to call any of the others special? If not, let's open the roll.
And that would be on items four and nine.
Four and nine. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Fifteen eyes.
Okay. Those are approved, and five through eight are received and filed. Next items, please.
Next items are items for which public hearings have been held, items 10 through 22, and item number 13 has already been acted on.
Okay. Colleagues, any specials? Mr. Zine? 10 through 22.
16, please.
16 for Mr. Zine. Ms. Gruel, 10 for Ms. Gruel. Any other specials, colleagues? Seeing none, let's open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Fifteen eyes.
Those are approved. Next items, please.
Next items are items for which public hearings have not been held, items 22 through 66. 10 votes are required for consideration.
Okay. Colleagues, specials on these items? We do have cards on a number of them, so we will call those special. We have item 37. We have item 40. We have item 56, 62. We have 59, 64, and 65. So, those will be called special for cards from the public. Any other specials, colleagues? 63 for Mr. Z... 62, we have special with cards, so we'll also mark that for you, Mr. Zine. Any other specials?
64 is special, Mr. President, and asks to be taken out of order with a 10-minute public hearing on either side.
Okay. 64, which we have cards on, and we'll also move public hearing if there's no objection to that. Okay? Any other specials, colleagues? There's no other specials, let's open the roll on the balance. Please close the roll, and please tabulate the vote.
Fifteen eyes.
Those are approved. Next items, please.
Next items on the supplemental agenda, items 67 through 69 are items for which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration.
Okay. We will open and close the public hearing. There are no cards on those. I'd like to call 67 special, myself. Other specials, colleagues? If not, let's open the roll on 68 and 69. Please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Fifteen eyes.
Is approved as well. Next items?
That would take council back to the items called special, and there is a request, I believe, to take 64 out of order.
Okay. And I'd also like to request 67 out of order following that, but we'll take 64 first. Mr. Labange has moved a public hearing of 10 minutes on both sides. Would you like to say something at the outset, Mr. Labange?
Members, I would just like to, this is the item, motion to exert 245 jurisdiction. I've never used 245, members, on a land use issue case as a member of council. Many of you have used 245 on various cases, and I have supported you in your thoughts that was important to your district. I feel this case should come under jurisdiction of the council, not because I agree or disagree with whatever decision was made by the commission, but because the decision by the Central Area Planning Commission deprived my office, as well as the community, of due process. The hearing in front of the Central Area Planning Commission involved two appeals of certain conditions of the zoning administrator's plan approval determination. This determination was sent out to the council office, both appellants, as well as the community at large. The appellants were ready to discuss these two issues when they learned that one of the conditions, 26B, had been deleted due to the advice of the city attorney's office. Condition 26B has been part of the original CUP approval since 1998. The condition has been tweaked with each plan approval hearing to benefit both sides, but never been found illegal by the city attorney's office. If it is illegal now, then it was illegal then. There has been a city attorney present at each level since 1998, as it's brought up, whether it's commission, plum, or the full council. And not, and ever at that time has been brought up, has been...
And not, and ever at that time has been brought up, has been illegal in the past. For the city attorney to declare that now without benefit of all parties is simply wrong. The city's attorney's office did not notify my office nor the zoning administrator. We should have an open process here in the city that we all value. I'm asking for 245. I'm asking it to go to the Planning and Land Use Committee. I'm asking them to determine what is best and then report back to council for final determination. Thank you, and I ask for a public hearing at this time.
Thank you, Mr. LeBange. We have 16 cards on the against side and 14 on the for side. Yes, Mr. Weiss?
I think Mr. LeBange is absolutely right. We need to hear the public hearing and have that occur. When the public hearing is concluded, I'll ask the city attorney's office to come forward and discuss the law that applies here. And colleagues, I think that what you will hear at the conclusion of the public hearing and the discussion from the city attorney's office is that what is before us today is a very serious legal question that implicates First Amendment of the United States Constitution, Federal Religious Land Use Protection Act, and other issues. And what we're going to be asking you to do today, colleagues, is to make the right legal decision. And I think, and I think once you hear all the evidence, that you will, you will decide that while the motion is brought in good faith, the correct legal decision will not be to approve it today.
Our first speakers will be from the for side. We are not going to be able... Yes, Mr. LeBange.
Mr. City Attorney, this is a land use matter, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, this is a land use matter that we're asking to look at, members. And what we've always stood for, always, is a process. Thank you very much. I'd love to hear this public hearing.
Thank you. Okay. We're not going to be able to get to all the speakers under what we have before us right now, which is 20 minutes of public comment, 10 for each side. So I'll move through the first 10 cards on each side and ask speakers to keep their comments to a minute if possible. And if comments have been made already that cover the ground that you'd like to cover, don't feel that you have to use all of that minute. But we will start with the for side. And Michael Wright will be the first speaker, and then Amy Forbes and Cindy Shavtall.
Good morning. My name is Michael Wright. I represent concerned citizens of Hancock Park. This decision allows a house of worship to exist on the Yavna property without a CUP, purportedly on the, because Arloopa requires it. Arloopa is not a free pass around the city zoning process. We need an open process to address the serious questions. Councilman Weiss just said that these are serious questions that are raised here. If that is true, and I believe it is, then we need a full, a fair, open process, not being sandbagged at the last minute with a decision for which we had no opportunity to prepare. Thank you.
Thank you. Amy Forbes is next, and then...
Good morning, Honorable Members of the City Council. My name is Amy Forbes. I'm a partner at Gibson, Dunn &amp; Crutcher. I am here representing Lerna, the League of Residential Neighborhood Advocates, that supports fully this request for a 245 motion. I want to say at the outset, I am a Jew. I'm a proud member of the Wilshire Boulevard Temple, and this is not about antisemitism. This is not about racism. This is a land use matter important to a neighborhood of which I also happen to reside. This, we live in a civil society, a society governed by laws. And in this case, a zoning administrator made a recommendation, supported by substantial evidence in the record, that there needed to be a modification in a condition that prevented a school from being used as a temple. That's what's at issue here. That recommendation was sent to the public. The public was told, "Don't worry, the zoning administrator has heard your testimony, and they are going to make sure that this school remains used as a school."
Thank you, Ms. Forbes.
Would like additional time, please. I have a letter to submit into the record.
If you can just please give that to the Sergeant-at-Arms, and Cindy Shavtall is our next speaker. I'm sorry, I have to keep to the one minute. My apologies. But if you submit that to the Sergeant-at-Arms, we'll be sure to read that. Cindy Shavtall? And excuse me if I butchered that. Is that right?
That's okay. I'm here to talk about why the zoning administrator originally deleted the condition permitting religious services. On October 21st, there was a bar mitzvah held at Yavna that had over 300 people in attendance with parking all over the side streets. We have videotape to submit, as well as an email from Miriam Perry, who is the executive director, acknowledging that there was indeed a bar mitzvah there. I wrote to say, "I'm writing to log a complaint about the bar mitzvah and party held on October 21st. The conditions and land use restrictions on this property are, the property shall not be utilized for weddings, bar mitzvahs, adult education, or by outside groups. The activities held on Saturday are a direct violation of conditions that Yavna, the residents, and the city agreed to in the original CUP. Yavna must respect the commitments they made to the residents." The response was, "Thank you for your email. This past Saturday, one of Yavna's students and his father were each called to the Torah to recite the appropriate blessings and culmination," and you can read the rest.
Thank you. I appreciate that. On the against side, we'll start with George Milstein, and then James Arnone, or Arnon, excuse me, and Nikki Dior, or Drawr.
Honorable Councilmembers George Milstein, Latham and Watkins, this is a simple legal question, whether or not the Constitution and federal law protects the right of prayer. Yavna Hebrew Academy is a Hebrew school. It is a religious school. Prayer is an essential element of what is, happens at that school every day. Every day, the students pray, and on the Sabbath, they pray. The Sabbath is the most sacred of days in the Jewish religion. It is the only day, it is the only ritual that is prescribed by the Ten Commandments. And these students, their families, their friends, their faculty, and the staff pray on Saturday at Yavna. That is constitutionally protected. As the city attorney will tell you today, that is a constitutionally protected right that is protected by Arloopa, which is the federal law. The city's decision with respect to this matter is correct. The decision of the Area Planning Commission with respect to this matter is correct. We request your no vote on this item. Thank you.
Thank you. James Arnone?
Good morning. I'm James Arnone, a partner at the law firm of Latham and Watkins, here representing the Yavna Hebrew Academy. The question before you is indeed a very simple question of law. Will this council take jurisdiction from the Area Planning Commission for the purpose of denying people the right to pray? The U.S. Constitution and the federal Arloopa statute are very clear. The city may not ban prayer. The city also may not restrict prayer unreasonably. Here, the facts are very clear. Orthodox Jews walking to Sabbath services hurt no one. They pray only indoors. They don't drive. They just want to pray. This should not be a political issue. This should be a simple question of fundamental constitutional rights. The Area Planning Commission, with advice from the city attorney's office, realized that it could not legally ban prayer. We urge you to allow the commission's very well-considered decision to stand and to avoid the challenges that would otherwise confront this council if an illegal decision had to be made. Thank you. We urge a no vote.
Thank you. Nikki Drawr?
Good morning, fellow council members. See, I, too, am part of a council. I am on the girls' student council at Yavna's school. I attend the Saturday services on Saturday. It is part of my Jewish upbringing. It is part of my education, a very important part. My whole family attends this. We do, it's something we do together. It's part of a Saturday routine. It would mean a lot to me if I could continue to do this. Thank you.
Thank you, council member. Our next speaker is John Vane, and after John Vane will be Sheldon Larry, or Larry Sheldon, and Ina Coleman, Ina Coleman, excuse me. John Vane.
Hi, I'm John Vane, and I am a resident of Hancock Park. I moved my family into this neighborhood because it's a residential neighborhood, and I was well aware that there was a school. And by the way, I am Jewish, so I, and I, what I find a little bit offensive is the fact that this seems to be dividing, in some part, the Jewish community. It seems to me this is really simple. There's a school, and there's a temple. I encourage people to go to temple. I go to temple. But I go to temple in an area that's properly zoned. I think that this is not something that, that should have been railroaded through, and I think that this should be kicked to plum. Anyway, I was going to go somewhere. I've decided not to. But I live very close to this, and I, and I think that people attending school are fine, having, having religious events, like bar mitzvahs, is not okay. There's plenty of temples, plenty of places people can go, and this is a slippery slope. If we go down this, this road and permit this to occur, we're going to have problems across the board. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Sheldon Larry? Larry Sheldon?
Good morning. My name is Sheldon Larry, and I live at 363 South McCadden Place. I attended a Jewish day school as a child. I lost an uncle in the Holocaust. My nephew and niece both went through the same Jewish school, the Associated Hebrew Day School. You need to know that Jewish day schools run from Sunday till noon on Friday. Students are dismissed early to give them ample time to get home and prepare for Shabbat at sundown. In addition, most Jewish day schools in this city and in the country do not house or even affiliate with a single synagogue or temple. That's the norm. Schools are schools, and synagogues or shuls are places of worship. Off the internet, I pulled a list of modern Orthodox day schools and yeshiva high schools. I have the list with me. I started calling them randomly. Not a single one said they either housed or affiliated with a synagogue. Not the Yavna Academy of Paramus, New Jersey, not the Yavna Academy of Dallas, Texas, not the Yavna Day School in San Jose, California. I could go on. I've got the whole list. Not even the ultra-Orthodox synagogue here in... Okay.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. I'm sorry, we have to keep to the time. But if you do have your testimony, if you'd like to give it to the Sergeant-at-Arms, we'll make sure it gets circulated to us. Ina Coleman?
Good morning. Thank you very much. Hancock Park is a welcoming neighborhood to everybody, and we're a diverse, flourishing community because we welcome people of all colors, religions, sexual orientations, and cultural backgrounds. Please, please do not believe that this is about us not wanting people who are Jewish in our neighborhood to pray. It is about the agreement that they made in 1998 to deal with their prayer and how it affects the residents of the neighborhood and the community. That's about their agreement from almost 10 years ago. It is so frustrating when they continue to divert the attention away from the real reason we're all here, of forcing and hearing the procedures and laws and what they agreed to. It is so frustrating as a person of color to have them sit here and talk about, about antisemitism and demeans the people who truly are victims of racism and discrimination. There's, that's not happening here. That is not what's going on here. And it is so hurtful, the core of us people in Hancock Park, we care about everybody, to have it made as antisemitism versus not. It is not.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Josh Weil, Josh Weil, and then Rabbi Daniel Krupkin and Gil Graff, your next three speakers.
Hello, my name is Josh Weil. I'm Yavna Boys Student Council President, and I've been attending Yavna Hebrew Academy since second grade, and I have been at the Yavna Saturday services before, and I believe that continuing services on Saturday at Yavna is a very important part of my education.
Thank you. Rabbi Daniel Krupkin? Rabbi Krupkin here? If not, we'll go to Gil Graff next.
One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all, is how we opened up this meeting this morning. We do live in a civil society, but when we have made attempts for civil discourse, we have been rebuffed. That is our biggest frustration in only trying to be able to speak with our neighbors, to reason with them that you cannot dissect a religious school with a place of prayer. To try and dissect them is an unnatural attempt for the city to meddle into affairs of religion. Every single Orthodox day school in the country, contrary to prior testimony, has a synagogue on its premises. Thank you.
Thank you. Gil Graff is our next speaker.
Thank you, members of the council. I serve as Executive Director of the Bureau of Jewish Education of Greater Los Angeles, an agency of the Jewish Federation. I don't come to speak about Arloopa and the strictest scrutiny that attaches to land use when it affects matters of religion, but rather as an educator. The word for a synagogue in Hebrew is shul, or school, and we refer to our places of gathering for religious expression as school and synagogue. There is no dichotomy between the two of them, as has been stated earlier. I ask you, as an educator, how we are to explain to our children that indeed the lessons of free exercise are not honored in this great community of Los Angeles should the council act contrary to the decision of the local Area Planning Commission. I ask your help in educating our children, be they Jews, be they not Jews, be they in private schools or public schools, about such a contrary ruling on the part of this council.
Thank you. Our next speaker is David Trainer, then Susannah Funston, and then Sandra Cohen.
The decision to allow religious services on the property and associated impacts was never analyzed as required by the California Environmental Quality Act. We need to do an environmental impact report. The applicant's representatives claim that there are no new impacts if temple use is allowed to expand. But as the zoning administrator has noted, that assertion ignores the fact that if temple use is allowed, Yavna will have bypassed appropriate permitting and environmental processes. If Yavna wants to have expanded religious services, bar and bat mitzvah, for example, they need to apply for a permit to operate as a house of worship. A sequo analysis would need to be undertaken. That would not just include studies prepared by the applicant, but would be subject to the independent review of the city and, of course, public scrutiny and comment. No proper environmental review of the expanded religious services has taken place. The house of worship permitted by the commission entails traffic, crowds, noise, and other effects that may constitute a legal nuisance and which would require preparation of an environmental impact report. We ask the city council to take jurisdiction in this matter.
Thank you. Susannah Funston is next.
I yield my time to Amy Forbes.
I'm sorry, we can't yield, and it's a rule that we established, we had some precedent on before, so I'm going to ask you to speak, please.
We are asking for a hearing. We feel that the Area Planning Commission should have gone to the Planning Commission first. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Sandra Cohen is our next speaker.
Sandra Cohen, concerned citizen, resident of Hancock Park. I want to say this is not about prayer. This is about waving the flag of prayer to be able to do whatever you want. If federal law truly would allow any use of this property as asked for by Yavna, then federal law will prevail at a due process hearing as well. This is about due process. This is about notice. This is about jurisdiction. This is about the way the city does business. I know I have the impression that the city did not do fair business, and I know that each of you on the council know this better than I. I know that there are pressures on you as well, not to do the right thing, so thank you very much.
We have the Very Reverend Ernesto Medina as our next speaker, and then Shaquille Sayad, and Rabbi Alan Kalinsky after that, please.
Good morning. I stand here on behalf of my bishop, John Bruno, Bishop of the Episcopal Diocese of Los Angeles, and will read an excerpt from a letter that's been delivered to you all. Within the boundaries of the Episcopal Diocese of Los Angeles, there are 36 Episcopal schools. It is unimaginable for us to operate a school with its religious foundation without prayer. Simply put, students and their families in a religious-based schools pray. It is also the custom of our schools to observe a week-long schedule, including Saturdays and Sundays, as opposed to the traditional Monday-through-Friday schedule, and it is with this understanding that I, as the bishop of this diocese, stand in support of Yavna's Academy's right to conduct services on the Sabbath, faithfully J. John Bruno, Bishop of Los Angeles. I, as provost of the Cathedral Center of St. Paul, have served as chaplain of parish day schools for five years, national consultant for parish school relations, and spiritual director for Episcopal schools. We fundamentally believe that the Constitution's right for the freedom of worship overrides land use zoning. Thank you.
Thank you. Shaquille Sayad?
I'm Shaquille Sayad, Executive Director of Islamic Shura Council, a federation of mosques, Muslim organizations, and schools. I am here in solidarity with my Jewish brethren. Prayers is a cornerstone of, in the life of any faith group. The challenge to pray at Yavna Academy is a challenge to Islamic schools just as much. No law or laws should ever impede prayer. It's a God-given right, and none of us can afford to compromise. I am here as a Muslim in support of Yavna Academy to conduct the prayers on Sabbath and urge you all to make the right decision. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Rabbi Alan Kalinsky? Rabbi Alan Kalinsky?
I had the privileges of speaking before the council several weeks ago on this matter, and once again reiterating the position of the Union of Orthodox Jewish Congregations of America to allow us and to allow the Yavna Hebrew Academy to have a synagogue on its premises. It is a cardinal principle of our faith that the education of our children go hand-in-hand with religious prayer. And contrary to the comments that were made by other members a few moments ago, having synagogue and schools together is quite common in our very own community. The Yeshiva University of Los Angeles, the Yula Schools, has a synagogue on its premises. The Hockam Hill Hebrew Academy in Beverly Hills has a synagogue on its presence, and so do many other of the congregations that dot the Pico Corridor. So it is a commonplace thing for our synagogues, provide for the religious education of their youth throughout the course of the weekend, to have religious services that take place each and every day, including the Sabbath. And so, once again, I urge the council to take heed of this message, to recognize, as Rabbi Karubkin mentioned earlier, the freedom of religion, the pledge that we all made a few moments ago, one nation under God.
Thank you. We have time for one more speaker from each side. Our next speaker from the fore side is Irene Tressun, and then Moshe Dear is our last speaker from the against side. Irene Tressun?
I sent an email to all of you as to how I feel, so all I want to say now is that anybody who wishes to pray and have a synagogue needs to ask for a permit. Also, I would like to say that I hope this council has the courage to take over something that is a municipally-wide issue at this point. It is not just a Hancock Park issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Moshe Dear is our last speaker. We'll ask the audience to please keep order.
Good morning. My name is Moshe Dear. I am the headmaster of Yeshiva at Yavna Academy. I'm proud to say that we begin each day with prayer. In the afternoon, we pause for prayer. Each and every day, Sunday throughout the week, parents, friends of the school, grandparents join their students, their children, and grandchildren for prayer. It is inconceivable to me and incomprehensible that a school could...should not be able to educate their children together with their families. That's part and parcel of our religion, to pray together, to educate each other, and we hope that the council makes the right decision today. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Again, I ask the audience to please keep in order. I'd like to read the names into the record of the folks we were not able to get to. That was 20 minutes, a little bit over actually, 20 minutes of hearing. Marie Burns was here, Ruth Marmelzot, Margaret Kunes, Una Kaner, David Rubin, Jacob Friedman, Walter Feinblum, David Luntzer, Stephen Eston, Dr. Leila Broner, Pastor Jerry Jimenez, James O'Sullivan, perhaps? Excuse me, couldn't quite read that one. Rabbi Chaim Kolodny and Sylvia Lynn Hawkins. I'm sorry, we didn't have time to get to those speakers, but that closes the public hearing. I'd like to recognize Mr. Labange.
Thank you very much, Mr. President, and thank members of the public for participating in an open, public process to voice their concerns. Members, all I'm asking for, that there be a open, public process, that it go to the Planning and Land Use Committee, that the Planning and Land Use Committee weigh all the efforts and hear what our city attorneys have to say on this issue. For them not to bring it up forward of this hearing, to actually have a hearing where they call all parties together on a published document that said what the conditions of this matter will be is not due process. And I stand for due process, which is the most important aspect of government. Members, I ask that we support a 245 and send this to Planning and Land Use Committee. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Labange. Mr. Weiss is next.
Actually, it's the due process clause of the United States Constitution that applies the First Amendment of the Constitution to the states and the cities. Because we have due process, the constitutional requirement that there shall be no law infringing upon the free exercise of religion applies to this body because of due process. I'd like to ask Mr. Gutierrez from the City Attorney's Office to come forward, ask, hold my time. He can bring whoever from the City Attorney's Office, and the zoning administration is relevant as well. He can hold my time, Mr. President.
Peter Gutierrez, Assistant City Attorney.
Why don't you all introduce yourselves for the record?
Sharon Sidorv Cardness, Assistant City Attorney.
Anik Charon, Associate Zoning Administrator of Record for this application.
Michael Legrand, Acting Chief Zoning Administrator.
First question for you on the procedural history, and you can all feel free to answer. The zoning administrator here modified the original conditions in this matter, and the APC later upheld the ZA modification. Can you please tell us the factual and legal reasons for those modifications?
Let me just generally say that when we're conditioning a use such as this, there are some general concepts that apply. For example, like landowners need to be treated alike. We need to regulate Saturday activities at this school in the same manner that we regulate similarly situated schools' Saturday activities. We need to focus on land use impacts, and we need to establish conditions that address those land use impacts. One thing that we don't do is we don't regulate prayer or who can pray on anyone's property. I don't really want to say too much more in that respect with respect to the legal issues. There has been a letter that was submitted to the council this morning, it's dated November 7, 2006, by the Law Firm of Latham &amp; Watkins, and it does threaten litigation, so we could have a more detailed discussion in a closed session, but I think that would be the more appropriate place to discuss further of the legal issues.
And I agree with that, and I think, and I will move for a closed session, but just so, because we have folks from the public here from both sides, if you could give us at least a legal understanding of those two concepts you just described, treat like schools alike, and when you say regulate land use impacts, can you at least talk a little bit more about those two concepts?
Well, you know, there are other private schools in the vicinity that have Saturday activities, as I understand it, so I think when we're looking at regulating any Saturday land use at a private school, we need to be looking at not singling out one school or another for disparate treatment, and certainly, under Ralupa, we can't regulate land uses in any manner that substantially burdens the free exercise of religion. That's the legal standard, and again, we could discuss that in more detail in a closed session.
But you used a term that I recognize, but just so that it's clear, disparate treatment is a meaningful term under the law. Tell us why.
Well, whenever you're making a land use decision, you need to...you cannot act in an arbitrary and capricious manner. You have to have some rationale for doing what you're doing. So when I say disparate treatment, I mean that, again, it goes back to the notion that like situations should be treated similarly, and so you should not single out one landowner or another for different treatment if the land use impacts are similar.
Okay, now segue into that second point, the point about land use impacts, because I did not hear in the public comment this morning from those who oppose the use of the school for prayer, I did not hear a discussion of land use impacts. Tell us more about the need, when you regulate in this area, to be regulating land use impacts.
Well, anytime we're regulating any land use, the focus is on mitigating impacts. So anytime you're conditioning a land use on a piece of property, you ought to be focusing on mitigating impacts to the surrounding community. That's the essence of placing conditions on a land use.
And if the council were to prohibit some sort of Saturday activities without a specified and identified nexus to land use impacts, I'm not asking you for your ultimate opinion, but why does that potentially raise issues of liability for the city? And we can have a greater discussion in closed session, but tell us generally the legal theories that apply.
Well, that would appear to be, based on your hypothetical, that's a fairly arbitrary use of power by a government entity that simply not allow a land use for no reason, so that would be legally suspect.
And briefly, what is Aralupa, just so everyone knows?
The Religious Land Use and Institutionalized Persons Act, and again, that's the federal law which establishes that in regulating land uses and in adopting land use regulations, we can't exercise our government power in a manner that substantially burdens the free exercise of religion.
And has that law been challenged in the federal courts, and has it been upheld?
It has both been challenged and upheld.
What is a liability that we call a Section 1983 liability?
Civil rights liability, for violation of civil rights. It's a federal law again.
Okay, hypothetically, how does Section 1983 potentially apply here? Hypothetically?
You know, I'd rather not go down that path, and I'm happy to discuss that further in the closed session. Anytime, but I'll just say generally, anytime a government takes an action that can be seen as arbitrary and capricious, there is the specter of Section 1983 lawsuit.
Let me ask a additional question, perhaps, for the zoning administration, but perhaps for you as well. There are ZA findings here relevant to land use impacts, relevant to Saturday worship. What can you tell us about the factual record developed below?
With Zoning Administration, what I had in front of me was the sixth plan approval to a conditional use which was approved in 1998, and the objective of the plan review was to review the conditions for the efficiency and compliance of the applicant with the various conditions. As we modify or we maintain the conditions, we do make findings as to, in the terms of a conditional use, as to the property of the location of the use and the fact that all identified impacts may have been mitigated.
And what record was presented about the extent and nature of potential land use impacts from Saturday activities at this location?
In terms of impact, I found that they were relatively minimal in the sense that the people who attend the services at the property apparently do walk to the services. However, there have been allegations of other users on the property which have been specifically prohibited by the original conditional use, such as bar mitzvah, for example, which are not part of the curriculum in themselves.
But I'd like you to tell us a little more about what factually was presented about the land use impacts of Saturday worship. I mean, do people drive? Do people park? Do people make noise? Are there visual impacts? Is there trash impact? Is there a pollution impact? Is there, you know, is there an impact, recognizable, definable, significant impact in this neighborhood?
They were non-presented.
Okay. I'd like to ask City Attorney, and I know we'll go into closed session, I'll move to go into closed session, but just if you could just wrap that up by talking about how that factual record relates to the legal issues before this council.
Well, again, as I said before, when we're regulating land uses, we focus on land use impacts, so to the extent that we're creating conditions, those conditions should be placed on a land use to mitigate land use impacts, to address land use impacts.
Okay. Colleagues, I have additional questions, but I will ask them in closed session, if that's the will of the body. I think that the City Attorney has indicated that litigation has been threatened. There are other issues that need to be discussed that are legal, and I think we can...that would be my sense, is that it's appropriate to go to closed session, but I defer to other people's views.
Thank you, Mr. Weiss. Our next speaker is Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Council President. I just wanted to reinforce that request that we go to closed session, have this discussion, so we can engage the legal matters in a way in which we can be cognizant of the president's setting actions that could take place, so I just request that we go to closed session as soon as possible and get there.
Okay. We only have one more speaker on the queue, Mr. Labange.
Well, session, we'll go to closed session, but the City Attorney, are you required as a house of worship to get a conditional use permit? Is that a law of the city of Los Angeles?
It is.
It is a law of the city of Los Angeles to have that. Thank you.
Okay. Colleagues, there's nobody else in the queue right now. Is there any objection to the motion to go into executive session? If not, it would be my recommendation, since we do have a lot of people here and interested in this, that we retreat to the executive chambers behind council, and that'll allow folks to stay here instead of clearing out these chambers. Mr. City Attorney?
And for the record, council will be going into closed session pursuant to Government Code, Section 54956.9b3e.
Okay. Thank you, colleagues. If you can please, everybody can stay here from the public, we will come back into open session as soon as we are finished with closed session deliberations. Welcome back into open session, colleagues and members of the public. We are now, still have the same item before us, item number 64, Council File 062691. And our first speaker back in open session on the queue is Mr. Weiss.
Ms. Charon, as you amble towards the aisles, if you could just have a seat, please, and obviously, if the City Attorney wants to sit at the table, make yourselves comfortable. Ms. Charon, can you provide us, and also the members of the public who are here today, with not a Reader's Digest version, but an extended version of the story of Condition 26B? And in particular, can you start with the history of it, which is '97 or '98, and that's the genesis of it, the passage of Aralupa in 2000, and then decisions that you made on your own and/or in conjunction with the City Attorney's Office that result in the current nature of that condition?
Yes. Anik Charon with the Office of Zoning Administration. The use of land on that property was approved in '98 via a conditional use for a private school. A number of conditions were imposed, which were worked out and taken and volunteered by the applicant, and made a number of references to the practice of religion, inasmuch as this private school happens to be a religious private school. Number of conditions are being imposed relating to the uses of the property, and one of the major ones at stake right now is Condition Number 26B, which is more of a note, as a matter of fact, and which reads, and I will read the original condition, quoting, "While it is understood that religious activities and religious education will be provided by the applicant, attendance at such events shall be limited to students enrolled in the school and their immediate families. Religious activities and services shall not be open to the general public." The intent behind that condition, and I verified that with the original zoning administrator of record, is that the conditional use was issued for a school, not for a house of worship, which is, which would have been subject of a different type of conditional use under the Planning and Zoning Code. Over the years, that condition has been going to the Board of Zoning Appeals through a first review, unchanged, and also later on through the various plan reviews, under allegations that the school was operating a synagogue open to the general public. The various zoning administrators, namely Mr. Green first, and then myself, have been trying to clarify that condition, all along recognizing that religious services and prayer were permitted on the site as part of the curriculum of the school, which again is a religious school. So we ended up being at my last review, which was the sixth plan approval, where I... So we ended up being at my last review, which was the sixth plan approval, where I, again, in my determination, I indicated that the attendance to these events will be strictly limited, I just added the word strictly, and I took away the word services at that point after consulting with the city attorney and also verifying first at my public hearing from the rabbi head of the school that there were no classes on Saturdays. I took away the word services. I also very specifically indicated in my findings that services, as long as they are part of the curriculum, are perfectly acceptable on the property. The only issue there is open to the general public or not. So my determination is issued, I mean, for the sixth plan approval, that is dated August 14, 2006, and this is what the public has read, meaning the applicant and also the Hancock Park Association community. Then comes an appeal from the applicant, and an appeal also from the Hancock Park Associations, one on offense and the other one on the users, which was perceived as taking away entirely the services. What I had changed at the same time was Condition Number 7B, which pertained to the hours of operation of the property. And I went back to the very original condition, which was for Saturday sunset, the use of Saturday, was permitted sunset to two hours after sunset from November through March for child-parent religious study. So comes in the appeal. At that point, in the appeal, the Arloopa Act, the federal act which was passed in 2000, was extensively mentioned in the applicant's representative arguments. Considering that, I consulted with the city attorney several times to find ways of addressing the concerns raised into the appeals, knowing also of the concerns of the remainder of the community, and finding out whether or not better wording than the one I had issued could be found. And we had several meetings, we had quite a bit of argument, and I will say very frankly, out of, and I keep repeating the same word, out of frustration, I indicated, I said, really what I would like to see is all reference to religious practice taken away. We have a school in front of us, we don't have a house of worship, we don't have a conditional use for a house of worship. And the city attorney was very happy with that. And that is the history behind my coming back to the APC and recommending the number of changes that I have recommended, which includes the deletion of Condition Number 26B, also elimination of a couple of conditions where we had, or modification where we had, for example, I think on Sunday, such to such hour for child-parent religion study, we took away, for the child parent, we maintained the hours and took away the reference to any type of a practice of religion. So that is a very long story of a short condition.
And I have one clarifying question for either you or the city attorney representatives. Can you explain, and this is strictly as a factual and procedural and historical manner, how the fact of Arloopa coming on the scene in 2000, in a sense superseded some of the language that had been drafted early on in the conditions?
For the record, Sharon Siedor of Cardenas, City Attorney's Office. When the original CUP application was made, a lot of the conditions that were included in it had been requested by the applicant. Then after that time, as you know, the Religious Land Use and Institutionalized Persons Act was adopted by the federal government, and it was at some point upheld through the courts. In that, we then, on an appeal where people raised those grounds, we had to take a second look at the conditions to make sure that they did not, quote, "substantially burden the free exercise of religion."
And so is it a fair summary, then, to state that the new changed circumstance of the new fact of Arloopa caused a reevaluation of whether the earlier wording for those conditions was legally appropriate?
Yes, that would be something we would look at, as well as whether there were identified land use impacts that those conditions were addressing.
Okay, so then switching to the substance of those sorts of conditions, Ms. Sharon or City Attorney's Office, I take it that substantively, conditions still remain on time, place, manner, numbers of people, special events that are limited. Is that correct? Were the substantive, I'll call them time, place, manner restrictions, just to shorthand it, were those removed or are those intact?
No, Anik Sharon, those are still intact.
So hours of operation, capa, number of participants, and limitations on the type of special events that can occur nonetheless are still present in the conditions?
Yes, the special events condition is under Condition Number 7, there's not even any paragraph, 7D, I assume. As far as the hours of operation for the school, it's under the heading "school," what was done is combining the Saturday, which originally under 7B was referring to religious study and prayer from 9:00 a.m. to 12:30, and indoors, that was integrated in the school in 7A, which is the school condition, all of that, which where we end up now with the Saturday use of the property from 8:30 a.m. to 9:30 p.m. That was a combination of hours which were already there originally. We just no longer indicate why and how those hours can be utilized by the school. They just have to be indoors.
Now let me turn to the issue of the process by which that language from 26B does not appear in the final action of the APC. You issued a staff report before the APC hearing?
No, we do not.
Okay, is that the custom and practice of your office, not to issue the staff report before the APC hearing?
Yes, it is.
What is, in fact, the custom and practice of your office with respect to staff reports and APC hearings?
Well, when an appeal is filed, of course, we read the appeal and we prepare arguments for a presentation to the appeal body. If there is or there are issues of particular concerns, we do consult with the city attorney, which is what I did in this point. And if there is a need, either new information, or if there is a need to improve on the conditions, then the changes are recommended at the commission meeting.
So was the manner in which you transmitted your staff report to the APC in this case consistent with the custom practice of your office?
Yes, there was no staff report.
Okay. And I'd like to ask the city attorney's office, speaking to the manner and procedure in which the ZA presented reports, analyses, and recommendations to the APC here, was that done in a customary, ordinary, and lawful manner?
Sharon Siedor, for the record again, yes, in my experience.
I have no further questions at this time, Mr. President.
Thank you. Mr. Reyes is next, and then Mr. Labonge.
Thank you, Council President. Colleagues, this is a no-one situation for one simple reason, there is a perception that has been established by the way this dialogue commenced earlier this morning. The perception being that we are talking about how we practice religion and who practice religion, and that is farthest from the truth. The fact here is, and Councilman Weiss is right, technically, legally, nothing wrong was done. But in my book, colleagues, what failed was communication between those who give us legal advice and those of us who have to be in a position to create trust, to create clarity in how decisions are made. Therein lies the gist of this discussion. It has nothing to do with who is able to provide the freedom to practice religion. It has nothing to do if you're Jewish or not Jewish. It is about how the council member of that district is trying to create an environment where we can trust the process. That is what is on the table. It's not whether we legally or technically did X, Y, Z correctly. For me, we are at an important place in our city where we can learn to trust the process. What the council member is asking is to fill the shoes of APC, knowing there is no liability, knowing that we are not going to lose any funding because of lawsuits, because of the simple fact that all he wants is to have the chairman of Plum, which is myself, Councilman Weiss, who is in Plum, and Councilman Weisar, to provide a step-by-step account of how that decision was made, and to provide each side an opportunity to speak to the issue. Nothing more and nothing less. It is that simple. So I ask my colleagues, let's provide that council member that opportunity. Let's have faith that our support system in the legal and planning world will provide us all the information that's necessary to come to a conclusion. But as you can hear from the facts that lead up to this point, there was a break in communication, there was an impression made that did not give both sides the ability to understand the issue, given how that transmission, that document, ended up in the public domain. So I believe we owe it to the council member that respect, knowing that I don't see any liability issues, but it provides a forum by which we can have that discussion and understand this is not about supporting a religion and/or the ability to worship, but the clarity of the decision based on the court's precedent as identified by the cases cited. So I ask to support the 245.
Ms. Garul is our next speaker, Mr. Rosendahl, Mr. Parks.
Thank you, and I apologize if this question has been asked again, and as I've stated before, I'm not a big proponent of 245s unless there is something that's been done illegal or improper, even if we disagree. But this has been a healthy discussion, I think Janice Hahn says this some days, how proud we are sometimes of this body, of the dialogue and discussion, and particularly of proud of Mr. Labonge, who I know has been a fighter for his community and his neighborhood and protecting quality of life along with Mr. Reyes and his willingness to accept. But what I don't want to do is set up some form of which expectations are created that something would change even if we do have jurisdiction over this item. So I ask this question as I did in executive session, which is, 26B, which seems to be the language that there's some concern about, during our deliberation, and I don't know if I'm asking this correctly in a legal sense, as she's giving me the eye, but you advised during the planning commissions meeting, the APC, did not advise, okay, you advised your planning department, the ZA, that 26B should not be included in the final language. And my question to you is, if we took jurisdiction, would that advise or counsel change relative to 26B?
For the record, Sharon Siedor of Cardenas again. Well, I don't want to say exactly what it was when I spoke to the planning department in terms of giving them legal advice. What I can tell you is that we did not specifically talk about a particular condition, but rather looking at whether there were impacts that were identified that could form the basis for leaving that condition in, based upon the appeal that was filed, which was challenging the conditions under the Arloopa law.
Okay. So under Arloopa, under whatever you've just described, you have advised or would advise that you would not add that language back in?
For the record, Sharon Siedor of Cardenas again, based upon the record that's currently before the council, we would not advise adding that back in.
And anything based on religious services occurring on a Friday or Saturday?
That's correct.
Okay. So colleagues, and again, the process, I was at a meeting last night with building and safety and planning till almost midnight with my staff, talking about another issue in my district, and process and participation is critically important. But I know when a lot of people come to me and ask me a question about, just say no, just do this, even if there is liability for the city, even though the advice of the city attorney is, says you can't do that. And I think what we're standing here today, and all of us believe in religious freedoms, we also are listening to the law as well, and both of those are at play here today, that the 245s are when, for me, this may not agree with everybody else here, but 245s are when there's something that has been done that is illegal, improper, incorrect, not as much on process. And I believe, however, the discussion about Arloopa and its impacts should be a part of there, but I don't believe on the 245 that I want people to understand that the opinion of the city attorney and the ZA, if we 245 it, will not change, will not change. And I think that's why I've been leaning on the no side, is not going to change in that, the discussion. And I, however, do feel that it is important for planning and the city attorney and others to have the dialogue and discussion with the community to explain the decision and how that decision has been made. But I wanted to ask on the record here, a non-executive session, but in public session, that if this was 245ed and it went to Plum, you would not recommend including the language on 26B with the information that you have provided to, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Mr. Parks?
Thank you, Mr. President. I would also like to just kind of go over some of the territory, that the 26B issue is something that I think we've gone over and over and over again. But although we keep saying in this whole process that it has nothing to do with religious freedom, it seems like that's the first thing that gets discussed when the discussion goes about this particular land use issue. If we stripped it down to what is the only land use issue that is of concern, what would that be?
It would be deleted.
Pardon?
It would be deleted.
And what specifically? Give me the narrative of what that specific land use issue would be if we'd stripped it down.
Well, we would take away, while it is understood that religious activities and religious education will be provided by the applicant, attendance at such events shall be strictly limited to students enrolled in the school, their parents and siblings. Religious activities shall not be open to the general public unless a conditional use permit pursuant to Section 1224W9 of the municipal code is obtained to that effect.
Okay, and you stripped, you reviewed that, and the city attorney gave you advice that that was not appropriate language since the federal law and other issues in the city?
That is correct.
Okay. And then, as we look at this particular issue that's confronting us, if we would 245 this, it opens the entire case up on all of the conditional uses, not just this narrow issue.
Again, for the record, Sharon Siedor of Cardenas, yes, councilman, that's correct. Once you assert jurisdiction, you then hear the appeal, and then you have to decide on the appeal, and you have to decide on whether any conditions from the original ZA report should be modified.
And this is on the appeal of two public hearings, a zoning administrators' hearing and the area planning commission?
Yes, there were two public hearings. There was one for the zoning administrator, original plan approval, where she then issued a determination. That was appealed. The appeal was then heard by the area planning commission.
Do we have any information as how long those meetings and how much public interaction was at either one of those meetings?
Well, Anik Sharon, zoning administration, my public hearing went on for three and a half hours. half hours.
Three and a half hours at which meeting?
For both parties.
For both meetings? Do we have any idea?
No, no, for my, for my hearing. The one for the APC went on for about, I think about the same time.
Okay, so we have what, if I understand, maybe six to seven hours?
Six to seven hours, yes.
Okay. And do we have any idea how much public interaction? How many people came forward and testified?
Sharon Siedor of Cardinals again. For the area planning commission hearing, the meetings are normally held in one of the rooms on the 10th floor. For that particular meeting, the hearing was held here in council chambers, and it was packed.
Okay. I mean, do we have any idea how many people actually testified at either hearing?
No, I'm sorry, I don't have that.
Could you? Twenty-three at the ZA?
I'm sorry, twenty-three at the APC, at the area planning commission.
Okay. Do you have a number for the zoning administrator?
Yes, I do. Yes.
So we had a total of, what, almost forty people and seven hours of hearing?
Yes.
Okay. And colleagues, I would just like to recount my concerns. The issue is, I think it gives, as Mrs. Gruel said, that we should have a very fundamental reason for opening up a 245. If we have no willingness to go through the entire hearing and the conditional use, then it's not an appropriate process. I would not want to cause this to go forward to a hearing at Plum with them only giving the guidance to explain what we're explaining today. And I would just hope that we would move forward, do the explanation, understand there's been seven hours of hearing, almost forty people testifying, and move from that point of explanation to where we as a city council would not take on the added burden of going forward and opening up another hearing or to impose that on the Plum Committee and make that decision today to let those two decisions stand.
Thank you, Mr. Parks. Mr. Rosendahl?
It's a tough one for all of us, obviously, around the horseshoe. First, I know everybody around this horseshoe, for their very last breath, would support people who pray on a Saturday, especially walking to a temple or synagogue and praying to Almighty God. So let's, let's put this where it needs to go. City Attorney, tell us about this process real quickly, from the ZA to the, to the APC, 26B and Ralupa. Let me just say what I know. The zoning administrator made a ruling. Then it was taken to the APC on appeal. Is that correct? Explain how that happened. You made a ruling. What did your ruling say?
Okay. Anik Charon, I first, I'm the zoning administrator, I first hold a hearing after proper notification of the, of the hearing. My hearing, as I indicated, lasted for three and a half hours. I took the matter under advisement. There was extensive material that was submitted. It took me quite a while to go through the material, and I issued a determination modifying some of the conditions. After that, once my, any determination is issued, there is an appeal period of fifteen days, during which two appeals were, were received. Then, from then on, we go to the area planning commission.
What were the two appeals made? By who and what did they say?
We have one appeal from the, from the applicant, opposing the changes that I made to the, to the use, and also opposing my determination on the fence, which, which they required. And there was one appeal from the homeowners association of Hancock Park, which appealed my determination on the fence.
Then it went to the APC, correct?
Yes, sir.
And what did they do?
The APC first heard the presentation which I made, among which some of the additional changes which I recommended pursuant or following the meetings that I had with the city attorney after receiving and reviewing the arguments presented in the appeals. So after my presentation, the commission held a public hearing with both appellants and also, I think, thirty minutes for each, each party, closed the public hearing and discussed and rendered a determination, which is normally final unless 245 to the city council.
So when it went from your body to the next body, there was a discussion among the city attorney's office and yourself, and it was vetted?
Between, between the filing of the appeal and my presentation to the APC, yes, there was discussion because of the material which was submitted. When, on an appeal, we do consider, obviously, I mean, the arguments which are raised. If there are any new arguments or any specific concern, it is not uncommon to check with the city attorney to verify that the city is not liable on one aspect or another of the appeal or the determination.
So it's uncommon. It's uncommon. City Attorney, would you explain your role now in this and how it went then before the APC?
Again, for the record, Sharon Siedor of Cardinals, the city attorney's office is, of course, the attorney for all of the departments in the city. In this case, our, one of our clients is the Department of Planning and the ZAs in particular for this case. You know, we also sit and advise the area planning commission. That's also one of our roles. And so in doing that, we tend to review the materials on a particular item that's coming before the commission ahead of time. We get the appeals, we review it, we look for any legal issues so that, you know, we're prepared to address them at the hearing. In this case, and this is, in many cases, the, the staff person will contact us between the staff decision and the appeal hearing to talk about any legal issues that are raised in the appeals, and we responded to those requests for advice.
Okay. In, in the real world, we're talking about this 26B. What is that?
Well, actually, we weren't, 26B is one of the conditions that was modified. The appeal that was filed challenged a number of conditions, basically saying that the conditions that were imposed upon them burdened their right to practice religion and were unconstitutional. And that's what we discussed with the zoning administrator. We did not have a discussion on condition by condition. It wasn't like that. It was more the overall issue as to whether we were, the parameters that we could impose conditions in this case.
So what's Ralupa? What is that?
It's the Religious Land Use and Institutionalized Persons Act. It was adopted by the United States Congress, and it applies to the states and through, and also--
And what does it mean?
To municipalities. Basically, it says that a governmental entity cannot do anything that would substantially burden the exercise of religion. In this case, it's applicable to us through our land use decisions, that we can't make a land use decision that would substantially burden their exercise of religion. It's been applied in a number of non-land use contexts as well.
So, Mr. Gutierrez, if you could give me an overview, what would we be doing if we took this to Plum, different than what's happened in the area planning commission?
If you took it to Plum, Peter Gutierrez, Assistant City Attorney, you would essentially be sitting in the shoes of the commission, so the case would be before you, and then you would essentially be having a decision-making role that the commission had. You'd have to decide whether or not you wanted to modify any of the conditions of that grant. You would be the appellate body.
Sure. But when you look at Ralupa, what does that tell you?
Well, it, what it tells me is that when you're making that determination, should you take jurisdiction, you're going to have to focus on land use impacts, you're going to have to treat this particular applicant and this particular school in the same way you treat other similarly situated schools, and you cannot take an action that would substantially burden their free exercise of religion, that would violate Ralupa. You have to focus on land use impacts, you have to focus on conditions that address those impacts.
Okay. So Mr. Labange brings up the question of process, and part of that process question had to do with our understanding of ZA and APC and what happened between the two. So how do we satisfy Mr. Labange's process here in the public right now to make it clear to everybody what the real issues are, and maybe it isn't necessary to go back to Plum?
I'm not sure I understand the question, but I mean, certainly, you know, there, there may have been some communication issues between our office and Mr. Labange. But again, you know, what's before you is whether or not to, to take this jurisdiction, and I'm not sure that--
Well, you're raising it, the communication issue. If the city attorney's office had communicated to the council office, explained this all out, could this have been a process?
Perhaps. I mean, I think there could have been better communication between our office and Mr. Labange's office. I, I don't deny that.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Wesson?
Thank you, Mr. President and members. I think Bill said it best when this was a, we put a lot of thought into this. This was a very difficult issue. All of us, at some time or another, have issues that hurt. That's the business that, that we've chosen. But I have to say, where it relates to Tom Labange, that he was very, and still is very concerned about the community of perception and wanted to, to ensure that this issue was properly vetted. And we, as his colleagues, agreed with him in the sense that this needs to be discussed. That's one of the reasons why we spent over an hour in closed session, and that's one of the reasons why we decided to have a broader discussion today. But I think it was Ms. Gruel who rose and talked about the importance of 245s. But more importantly than that, she talked about false hope. And I think that I can say, my feeling is, in the discussion that we had, is that there would not have been the number of votes on this council to say that people could not pray on Saturday. I do not believe, if that issue was before us today, that the votes would be there for that. But I think that this is what government is all about, this broader discussion. Here we are, spending time, this is viewed on Channel 35, we have people here that are for, people here that are against, people here that have questions about the process. And what we are attempting to do during this discussion, I will not even call it a debate, during this discussion, is to try to eliminate some perceptions, is to try to answer questions. And I just want to say to Mr. Labange that I commend you for your wanting to have balance as a courtesy. You know, there's just about nothing that I wouldn't do for you. But on the other hand, I appreciate you indicating that, that it's important for us to be comfortable in the stance that we take today. So I just want to thank you for that.
Thank you, Mr. Wesson. Our next speaker is Mr. Reyes.
Colleagues, when I stand here to support Councilman Labange, it's a posture I would take with each and every one of you, because you made it clear, he's made it clear, that for him, it is about the process. I have a letter here from the Right Reverend J. John Bruno, the Sixth Bishop of Los Angeles for the Episcopal Diocese of Los Angeles. In it, he states, "I urge the Los Angeles City Council to exercise its authority and allow the Yavne Academy to be free to operate its school in a manner consistent with its traditions, customs, and religious practices." The sad state of affairs at this moment is that an environment was created where this perception and this message was out there, and that is farthest from the truth or the facts. All Councilman Labange wanted to do is create an environment to establish understanding because there was a breakdown in communication between his legal and planning advisors and his office. And when he was being held accountable by his constituents, he wanted a venue to speak to how that 26B disappeared on that document. It's that basic. So I still stand for my colleague, regardless of how we vote today. What holds true in my mind is that if any one of you felt that you were short-changed or miscommunicated to, and a misimpression or the wrong impression or the wrong conclusion was established by your constituents, you would want that opportunity to provide a picture that reflects the facts and that reflects your position as an elected official. And that's all I'm asking, is to afford that opportunity. Come what may with the vote, I still support Councilman Labange. Thank you.
Mr. Zein.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have been here in the executive session and listened to the dialogue. Tom Labange has a heart of gold. Tom Labange is concerned about this community of Los Angeles and the people on both sides of this council chamber. His heart is in this city and has always been in this city. I am Catholic, but I'm also present in a Jewish home for the aging executives. This is not about religion. This is about land use, this is about the city attorney, it's about planning, it's about building safety, it's not about religion. And somehow, you get in this focus of religion. The Catholic Church has events on Saturday, they have events on Sunday. The Jewish faith has events on Saturday, they have shul. They don't have events that often on Sunday. My concern is that we be fair with all people and all religions. Tom Labange believes in that. And the concern is that there be an open hearing so people will understand that. We have charter schools that we have to deal with that impact neighborhoods. We have this situation at a school that's impacting neighborhood. If we 245 this, City Attorney, do the facts change, or is it still going to be the same facts that we have today? If we 245 this, we have the hearing, we go through the debate, we go through the dialogue, witnesses come and testify, are the facts that we have today going to change by the time we have a hearing? Are the facts that we've been presented, anything going to be revealed that we don't have now?
For the record, excuse me, Sharon Siedor of Cardinals again, we can't answer that, councilman, because you will be having an evidentiary hearing in front of the Plum Committee. I can't speculate as to what's going to be presented at that point. I only know what's in the record up to this point.
If there's nothing in addition, there's no additional information of what's in the record, would the decision by the city attorney's office change as to what this school can do or cannot do?
Our advice, not our decision, because we don't make a decision, but our advice would not change if the evidence was, remained the same.
Okay. To my listening, nothing has changed as far as the evidence was brought forward. What's been stated has been stated repeatedly in this room and the executive session. And if we say, okay, Tom Labange, we're going to let this 245, it'll go through another hearing in Plum, it'll go through another ordeal for the community and the school, but to my knowledge, nothing's going to change. And we want to have an open public hearing, and we want to release everything to the community, so there is no misunderstanding. My concern is that we be honest, we be direct, and we be fair with the community that's impacted with the school. And as I understand, this is about a situation that occurs at the school on a weekend, particularly on Saturday. They're not complaining about the location of the school, they're not complaining about the students or the traffic or playing in the yard, whatever the case may be. It's the issue about something happening on Saturday. And if a school has a carnival on Saturday, if a school has another event on Saturday, which our schools oftentimes do, the community somehow exists and they live with that. And I want to support Tom Labange on his motion, but I also want to be fair to say, if we do that, nothing's going to change. All we're going to do is prolong this for everyone-- All we're going to do is prolong this for everyone for a longer period of time. That's the issue that I see before us, is nothing's going to change from the evidence that's been presented, from the dialogue that's taken maybe three hours. So I'm going to support the community by saying that this school is there, this school's not going away. And this is not about religion. If this was a Catholic school, or a Methodist school, or a Protestant school, or whatever the case may be, it'd be the same facts that'd be before us today. So I want to take the religious aspect out, and the reason why I say I'm Catholic and I go to church, I'm the president of Jewish Home Executives, is because I believe in fairness for all people. So again, it's not about religion, it's about the facts of the location there.
Thank you, Mr.-
So, Tom Labange, I'm not going to be supporting a 245. I love you as a brother, you know, but I believe it's fair to proceed forward and not to support the 245. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zine. Our last speaker is Mr. Labange.
Members, it's about process, and I do support a 245. I support Yavna. Yavna is a tremendous school that works with the community, but there's conditions that that school has to have, and some of the conditions need clarification, and the zoning administrator tried to clarify those, but then it, towards the final process of this long process, the city attorney felt, asked for advice by the zoning administrator, that they must consider the matter this way. And that's what disappointed the process of the people, the people who felt they did have an opportunity to come down. That's why we have 245. There was other 245s that members had in the past here, and one of the quotes from one of the council members was, "They did not receive a fair hearing." That's all I'm asking, for a fair hearing. But I know, members, I don't know how you're all going to vote, but I can look at some eyes, and I don't see the eyes that I usually see. I do see dedicated members of city council, but I don't see the eyes that I usually see on issues that we share as we deal with the district, and the districts of the 15 city council districts. I just want to know, has there been any, Madam Zoning Administrator, disregard for existing conditions in this case that is before us? Any disregard for existing conditions?
I'm in Charron with the Office of Zoning Administration. At my hearing, the allegations have been that the school property has been used for a house of worship open to the general public. And that is the main issue. No one is discussing or denying the right of the school, which happens to be a religious school, to hold services. Services are part of the curriculum, they are part of the religious education, there is no discussion there. The main point is whether or not the school is, not the school, but the Saturday users especially, are open to the general public, which the school doesn't have the right to do at this point.
Does not, but the city attorney's now saying they may have the right to do that, because we can't legislate that issue, 26B, for clarification, enforce it?
We're not saying that they have the right to operate a house of worship. A house of worship requires a conditional use permit, but they do have, if we're going to condition their Saturday uses, absent finding that it constitutes a house of worship, if we're going to condition Saturday uses, those conditions have to be based on land use impacts. I mean, that's the advice that we've consistently given. The issue about whether it's a house of worship or not, that is a factual one, and I don't think that was the determination that was made by the zoning administrator or the planning commission, the area planning commission.
But do you think on that land use conditions, do you think it would be good to have another hearing? Because that's what I felt when the people expressed to me this.
Well, that's a policy consideration that I will leave to the council.
Right. Members, I am going to ask for 245 for this motion here. You've heard this matter as described by our council city attorney of what the issues of whether we could extract that. I'm also going to ask, whatever the outcome is, that I would like to meet with all parties who are interested in this very important school, in a very important neighborhood, of which all neighborhoods are important, because maybe it's today at 5353 West Third Street, but it could be anywhere in the city of Los Angeles as we progress in the future based on this federal law that the city attorney has interpreted as it relates to that. Members, I call for a vote and I ask for a 245, so there could be a full hearing on this case.
Thank you very much, Mr. Labange. That finishes our speakers queue, colleagues. There's been a motion for council to assert section 245 from our charter, formerly known as Prop 5. That is before us. Mr. Labange, did you want to say something else? You just popped up on the speaker queue? Okay. Okay. All right. A yes vote is to assert jurisdiction, a no vote is to have the APC decision stand. Okay? Everybody clear on that? Any points of information? Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Six ayes, nine noes.
That does not get asserted, and so the APC decision will stand. Thank you, colleagues. Yes, point of clarification, Mr. Weiss?
Mr. President, since this is day five of five-
There's no need to receive and file. Correct. This is the last day that action could have been taken, so there's no need to receive and file. Ms. Gruel, could I ask you to switch seats real quick? I'm just going to take, if there's no objection, colleagues, item number 67. We've had some folks that have been very patiently waiting, and I'd like to take that out of order if there's no objection.
I'd like to recognize a Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you very much, Madam President. Colleagues, it's been a good vigorous discussion. In fact, as we took this last vote here, it was very appropriate that the next item we're about to take up, or the item that we have before us, is the donation of 6,800 copies of a great new book. It's called "Los Angeles: Structure of a City Government." And I'd like to ask two individuals, Rafe Sonnenstein, who I know many of us know, who is the staff for the Charter Reform Commissioner, but also is very active in, sorry, in the Neighborhood Council Review Commission right now, but was also very involved in our charter review, to come forward. Also from the League of Women Voters, Yvonne Gottlieb is here. The League of Women Voters, colleagues, together with this great author, come on forward, Rafe, we'll sit you here at the table and see if there's a short presentation you'd like to make on this, has written this book to get government closer to the people of Los Angeles. Why don't you come through and just sit over here at the table? It essentially goes through, just as we have here with our council ambassadors and our charters and the city clerk's office, a history of the city charter, the roles of our elected officials, our appointed officials, our boards and commissions, our charter departments, our proprietary departments, our non-charter departments, some of our joint authorities and regional governments, and also how city finances works and how people can participate in city government.
Mr. Garcetti, one minute. Could we just have quiet in the chambers? If you're going to have conversations, you could please go outside or continue with our business.
We can ask the sergeants-at-arms to assist us in making sure the conversations are outside. Thank you all for the folks who have been here and very patient for all of this. It's a wonderful book. There are 5,000 copies that are being distributed to this city council, divided by 15, so 400 and something copies for each of us, to give to community members, to share with folks. An additional 1,800 copies are being given out to make sure that every single neighborhood council board member will be able to enjoy this book as well. So, if you could just hold my time, and I'd love to hear from the author and also from the league, Yvonne, your plans with this, how this came about, and just thank you for your generosity in getting government closer to the people. It's an incredible book that we'll be passing out to everybody. I think everybody has a copy on their desk now. We'll make sure if you don't, that you do have it, and then we'll be sharing that with the public at large as well. So, welcome. And thank you for your patience this morning.
Thank you, Council President Garcetti, members of the city council. I believe everybody does have a book, and I might want to point out that it is even a signed version of the book, signed by the author. I am Yvonne Gottlieb, and I chair the League of Women Voters of Los Angeles's Education Fund. The Education Fund is the arm of the league that supports and oversees the league's educational activities. It is not involved in the league's advocacy work. It is really an honor to be here today with Dr. Sonnenstein, and I would also like to recognize a couple of the members of our committee, Jane Goichman and Renee Shannon, who are in the audience. They and I are former presidents of the League of Women Voters and have been on the committee that has worked on this project for the past several years. We're especially excited to be here because we are indeed going to be able to offer 6,800 books to the city at no charge, and in addition to those, there will be 7,200 books that will be made available to the public, to the libraries, to the schools, to business and civic organizations, and to individuals, and these too will be offered at no cost. It was interesting that in the Los Angeles Times this morning, one of the front page articles talked about the cost of school books for college students, running now up to $150 per book. So the fact that this is a free book, we felt was especially noteworthy. The book has roots going back to 1964, when the president of the league was a woman by the name of Pat Russell, who a few years later went on to be a member of this august body for a number of years. The book was written and researched by league members. In fact, the chapter on the book that was about the city council was written by Joy Picas, who followed in Pat Russell's footsteps a few years later to join this body. It was written by league members because they wanted to learn about city government and because they wanted to provide a resource for the community, so that members of the community could learn about city government and would become involved in the life of this great city. The book was updated several times over the years, but not since 1986. And as we all know, a lot has happened in Los Angeles government since 1986. And so we concluded that it was time to update the book once again. We wanted the book to be something that would be easily accessible to the greater public, and we thought, wouldn't it be wonderful if it could be free? So we went to the John Randolph Haynes and Dora Haynes Foundation, because this is an organization that has as its exclusive mission to do social science research on public policy in Los Angeles. And they also, their founder, Dora Haynes, was the very first president of the League of Women Voters. They put us in touch with Dr. Sonnenstein, which was a wonderful idea. We have thoroughly enjoyed working with him over the last several years, and he's going to tell you a bit about the book.
Great. Thank you.
Mr. President, Madam Chair, honorable members of the council, this is the result of three years of work with a team, not just with myself, but obviously with the League of Women Voters volunteers. And also, you should know how much your own city employees contributed to this book, including some former ones. Dick Dickinson, whom many of you know, used to work in the CIO's office, was the senior researcher working with me on this and was a great help to us. But also, your current employees, from the CIO, to the CLA, to the city attorney, to department heads and department staff, all gave time to read over sections and make sure they are accurate. But the real heart of this book is to try to make the city government accessible to the public. This is a city where people are suffering from a lack of information. And Dr. Haynes's theory, the old progressive theory in Los Angeles, was that knowledge equals power. And then if you don't know what the government is like, the government will seem distant and inaccessible, and you'll be reluctant to participate. But we also found that many people in government don't know what the government is like, and especially many people don't know what the new charter is like. And I was happy, having worked on the new charter, to try to write a version that really is fresh and new, that really tells you what's in the new charter, including section 245, which you saw an example of today.
And which, if I can interrupt, there's this section, we were just quoting on, colleagues, if somebody out there in the viewing public was wondering, what were they talking about, section 245? It's right here on page 48.
And I'm happy to see that 245 is like Prop 5, still used as a verb. So we used to be able to prop 5 things, now you 245 them, but it does prove that the charter is understandable and the government is as well. At the end of the day, this all goes back to what the Brown Act says, which is that the information about the government belongs to the community. And it belongs, in my, our view, both to the elected officials, the appointed officials, the neighborhood councils, the members of the community, and all to come together to be able to exercise their force democratically. It's a great honor to have worked with the league and the Haynes Foundation on this, and we hope that this book will have a good shelf life, and it has the added virtue of being free.
Great. Thank you.
Well, thank you both so much. I think it already has become a bestseller simply by us getting so many copies, and we will continue to hopefully make it into a bestseller, because it is something that is so critical. It's the great Tom Labange who says, "Information is knowledge is power." So when you say "knowledge is power," this is the information that gets us there and who helps us understand that. And I think, as we look at city government, you're right, this is going to be as useful to us as it is to the general public, and something in which we can continue to see as open and as transparent government as possible. And I want to thank the league, because you've always continued to be a voice for that here, and this is really a great step forward. And thank you for thinking of the neighborhood councils, because as that becomes a new layer of our city government and our process, making sure that every city, sorry, neighborhood council board member will be able to have one as well, I think is a really brave and bold step and one very important as well. So, thank you for this gift to the people of Los Angeles. I know that it'll be used in many classrooms, as well as the informal classroom that is called Los Angeles. And colleagues, embrace these books, give them out to those folks that, you know, maybe some who are experts and already are those neighborhood activists, but also to that child who doesn't have any idea how neighborhood council, I mean, how city government works, or somebody who's getting involved for the first time. And I know that it will continue to have ripple effect in making government as clean, as transparent, and as democratic as it possibly can here in the city of Los Angeles. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. And before, we do have Mr. Rosendahl, Mr. Padilla, Mr. Smith, Mr. Labange. We do have a public comment card from Sharon Brewer out in, we're not sure if she's still there or not in Banneys? She's not, okay. We wanted to, thank you, Sharon, although I know we went a little long on our other items, so appreciate it. I'd like to now acknowledge a Mr. Rosendahl.
Thank you, Madam President. Yvonne Gottlieb, you're a constituent of mine, you live in Mar Vista, and you're an old friend. I've been on the Ed Fund Board of the League of Women Voters, and I remember President Edabelle Kitchen and I sat in a room begging for bucks to get that fund going so we could really make it happen, and Lois Safian when she was president as well. I think the league has done an incredible job in forming and lighting, connecting people to the issues of the day. It's a shame that a town of this size, local television, doesn't do more public affairs programming, empowering constituents with impartial information. All we saw in this last election cycle, which ends today, is distorted kinds of handbills in our mail, 32nd spots, yes on 87, no on 87. We're trying to figure out where we take our vote and how we act it out. It's a shame that the process isn't open enough and the airways cleared up enough so that around elections, the American people get the information they need to make a basic decision. It's a disgrace. So I say to the League of Women Voters, thank you. And to you, Raphael, you're a great journalist and you're a great political scientist, and this is a helpful hand for people who want to understand LA city and how it operates. It's a must-read, and we thank you all for putting it together, and we're more than happy to accept our copies and pass them out. God bless you both. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Padilla, Mr. Smith, Mr. Labange, Ms. Gruel are next.
Rafe, can I ask you to open up to page 61, please? And on the one hand, I want to, first of all, thank you for this section in the chapter that makes reference to deputies of elected officials, because colleagues, I think we would all agree, we couldn't do what we do without our hard-working staff. And if anything, I'd just encourage you to maybe expand on that in the next edition, because with term limits, they're playing a bigger and bigger role around here as well.
And having served as a deputy to a city councilman here 22 years ago, or 32 years ago, when Tom Labange and I were deputies here playing on the city hall softball team, it had to be a section about deputies to elected officials.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Labange. And Mr. Smith is next.
Well, thank you. And I want to commend the League of Women Voters for keeping this great tradition going. When I came here now 27 years ago, the book was about half as big, but you're providing a great sort of, I always gave these out to the libraries in our district, particularly the school libraries, because this is tremendous resource guide for kids particularly who are given an assignment to write about government. And they don't know the answer to these questions, but they're in this book. So congratulations to you for keeping that tradition alive. It's a tremendous resource for the next generation that's coming up, the next generation leaders and citizens as well. And thank you both for this.
Thank you. Mr. Labange.
Thank you very much. And Mr. Smith, in follow-up, I was going to suggest that there's over 70 branches. If we could have two copies made available to each branch-
If we could have two copies made available to each branch library, if that's great. And I really want to thank the League of Women Voters for all that you do. I want to thank Rosemary Fitzpatrick, who is a member of the League. She's ill at this time, but she grew up in Los Angeles, migrated from Minnesota, became a librarian, and always was proud of the League. And I just wanted to give a shout-out to her. And I asked you, who printed this book?
What was the name of the printer?
Did we have an outside printer? I know we...
It was an outside printer.
It was an outside printer, because I know in the past, we've tried to get our own printers to print it. But it's great that you got it printed from the grant, from the Jonathan Hayes Foundation, which is very good. And it's, I remember reading this book when I was on Mayor Tom Riley's youth council, superseding the city hallers. And Rafe, you were a great third baseman, so, and you're a great educator at Cal State Fullerton, and a great participant in the process, as the League is. So I just want to thank everybody. Structural of a city is what it's all about.
And you'll see Mr. LeBonde on page 94. Mr. Mulholland, your favorite is right there.
Oh, good job.
How many city departments are there, Mr. LeBonde?
36.
Mr. Sunshine, is that correct?
I refuse to comment.
All right. Good answer. Ms. Gruel.
I just want to add my congratulations and thank you to the League, and to Rafe, and to the Haynes Foundation for making this possible. It is, you know, something that can be used by young and old, and even for the, some of us who have been around for a long time. Rafe, I think I've known you for that somewhat 25 years. But this document, again, it's almost, to me, exciting when you read that, and I guess that's why I like being a council member, is exciting about the structure of the city and what it means, and how it works, and how we can ensure that the community participates. And to provide them with that information, as discussed earlier, is knowledge and is power for all of us. And so with our neighborhood councils, this is going to be another set of books and information we provide to them and to residents in Los Angeles. And so this donation to us is critically important. I want to say thank you. And I know that next year and the year after, it's probably going to have to change again, because that's the dynamics of the city. And that's, I think, what's exciting about the city. And as we look at Rafe's role as the contractor or consultant, I guess it is, to the 9/12 Commission, we're going to look forward to the kinds of input we're going to see, even in looking back at the charter that was adopted by the residents of Los Angeles. But I think that's the good part, is that it is evolving. It is something that is a document continuing to be in process, because that's what the city is made of, is adjusting and trying to address the issues that are concerned to all of us. But thank you. It's a wonderful book. We'll add it to the many Rafe Sunnenshine books I have. A plug for you for all the other books that you've written, that people go out and buy. But this is really a great addition, and thank you for being part of the civic family we have here in Los Angeles. Thank you, Mr. President.
We'll start planning the update very soon.
You'll start planning the update, okay.
Thank you very much. Mr. Zine is next.
Thank you. Good seeing you again, doctor, from the old charter days. On page 51, I have a question. Is that Tom LeBonde at the Los Angeles River? Because I know Tom LeBonde takes walks along the riverbed. And that looks like Tom LeBonde.
If it is, it's strictly a coincidence. We have no idea.
All right. The other question, or the other statement I have regarding, and this is outstanding book, 169 neighborhood councils. We know how hard we worked to establish neighborhood councils, and a wonderful reflection on what good work they're doing. And to the League of Women Voters, I was on KBIG this morning, for now we're talking about the election today, and I kept on giving that website, they want information, League of Women Voters, and giving that website over and over, so you'll be flooded with calls today from the people who want no information. A great resource. So thank you for the book, and Doc, good seeing you again. Thank you very much.
Good to see you again, councilman. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zine. Mr. Rizziar is our next.
We have staffers staffing the hotline to answer all those calls that are coming in.
I too want to echo the congratulations and the thank yous for this. As one of the newest councilmembers to the city council, I certainly could make use of it, and I could call off my staff now, who've been doing something similar for me, filling in the lines of many of the departments that we have. And I hope and will help get all these books to all the high schools and middle schools. We have a lot of people out there in our city who want to be active, want to be involved, and this is one tool that's going to help them understand the structure for them to go out and do that. So thank you very, very much. This is much needed, and I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, councilman.
Ms. Han.
Thank you. Well, I'm just standing up to offer my bit of congratulations, and as a former elected charter commissioner, you, of course, were the staff or the appointed charter commissioner. But you know what? We certainly watched what your panel was doing, and at the end, of course, you know, we all came together. And I was always very in awe of your ability to, you know, talk about a group of cats needing to be herded. It was both charter reform commissions, and you were able to really get us to a point where we produced what I thought was really a fine document, which the voters agreed with us on. And I love this, because before this, you know, there was not a good place to find information on what the city was all about. I think Dennis and I both, in our experience, in fact, I used to tell people, when I was on the charter reform commission, I said, you know what? I love this, because I feel like I am in city government 101, and I'm sitting on the front row. And for us on the charter reform commission, we did go by department, by department, where the money was, what debt financing was all about, and we came out with an incredible degree in city government. And I know when I ran for city council in 2001, part of what I felt proud of was that no one could out-city government me, because I'd written the book on it. And I think now we have a more probably concise book on city government. And I urge not everyone from high schools, but certainly neighborhood councils, and people who aspire to be on this body, should read this book and get a real good understanding of what we're all about. And I love it that there's things in this book that we created in the 1999 city charter, and that's something I think we can all be very proud of. We believed we were creating a more accountable, a more efficient, and a more streamlined government, and I hope your book reflects that. So good job, Rafe. And thanks again for what you're doing for the 9/12 Commission, because I think you bring the exact same gifts and talents and qualities to that commission as you did to the charter reform commission. And I hope you will steer them, and guide them, and direct them to come back with some very meaningful recommendations about how we can improve the neighborhood council system in Los Angeles. Good job.
Thank you, councilmember. It was a great honor to work with both of you and the other commissioners in both commissions as well. Thank you for bringing back those good memories.
Mr. Sunshine, who was a better commissioner, was it Mr. Zine or Ms. Han?
Again, I refuse to comment at this time.
Very wisely done. And I forgot to add a verbal amendment, colleagues, to change the number from 5,000 to 6,800 to reflect the additional donation. So if there's no objection, we'll accept that as a friendly amendment. And that finishes the speaker queue. So with that, let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
We officially accept the donation, and thank you very much again for your great work on this. And folks who are watching out there, who are interested in a copy, please contact your council member, as we'll be able to give copies to the public. Thanks so much. We've had a ask to take number 62 out of order, if there's no objection, item number 62. And Ms. Han, we do have cards, we could just, we could take that first.
Do you have a motion in front of us? No, Dennis is going to do it.
Why don't we take the public speaker? Mr. Dowd, is this you, Mr. Kares?
I believe, but I believe Councilman Zine has amended motion.
Okay, well, we'll take the public comment first, and then we'll go to Mr. Zine. Go ahead, Mr. Dowd.
Yeah, thank you so much. Just want to comment on this one, the pension plan for fire and police. Putting this one on the ballot next March, and I'm all in favor of this one, because it's not commingled with anything. So I'm giving it the Matt Dowd, go ahead. This one looks great. I'm all for the firemen and everything, I just don't like the way they leer at women off the trucks in public. I'm against that. I saw it sunset last night.
Madam Clerk, there are no further cards in the, and there's no speakers on the queue, except for Mr. Padilla.
Has it amended motion first? I'll defer to Mr. Zine.
Right.
62. We want to amend that to include all plan employees, all plan enrollees, all plan enrollees. Anyone who's on the plan, who's a member of the city family, would be included on that particular plan.
All plan enrollees, right.
Which would be police, fire, and port police.
Right.
Those are the three restrictions.
Resecan that. I do. Oh. Oh, no.
That was a second, I think?
Yes, she did. I heard it.
And you're married too now. All right, thank you. All right. Madam Clerk, we need to vote on that as amended?
Hopefully.
That was all we had on it, just to vote.
We do have an attorney coming down on this who had some concerns. If there's any way we could put this on the table?
Wait, we have a what, Mr. Zine? Do I hold it on the table? We have the motion, we have it seconded.
Okay, we're going to open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
All right, thank you.
13 ayes.
Madam Clerk, next vote, next item, please.
Next item, Madam President, is item number 10, and that was called special by councilmember Gruel.
Ms. Gruel.
Thank you. Could I have the CIO, Mr. Fujioka? Colleagues, we have before us, actually, I think it's item number 10 and 11. This is on the business tax? New business tax?
Yes.
And as, the original motion that I submitted was to extend the business tax exemption for two years, that has been in effect, I can't remember how long, but for four or five years at least. How long has the two-year exemption been? All right, your memory is as bad as mine.
About four years.
Okay, about four years.
Yes.
And the interest we have in the Ad Hoc Business Tax Reform Committee, as well as in Budget and Finance, is that we have found that being business-friendly actually brings us more business. And we found in this last year, when we were able, the last two years, been able to provide some business tax reform assistance, and in fact, the numbers of businesses in Los Angeles have actually increased, I think by 27,000 new businesses last year. And my original motion was asking for us to extend in perpetuity the second year of business tax reform, which means if you're a new business, you do not pay business taxes for the first two years of coming into the city of Los Angeles. There were issues raised by the CIO and in Budget and Finance about whether or not in allowing it in perpetuity, would there be any out clause? We talked about the importance of if you're a business planning to move in the city of Los Angeles, you plan farther than just the next year, and the next year, and the next year. It's a minimum of five years. There was language that the city attorney developed and has put in the report that you have before you today, the ordinance, includes language that in case of a dire, dire emergency, that you would be able to suspend, in essence, that particular exemption. And then we would add on an additional year after that. I wanted to go back to my original motion, which was to extend this in perpetuity. I understand there are some questions, I don't know if this is, you can answer this, Mr. Fujioka, with the ability to have it in perpetuity and not violate the 218. And again, my concern is, I don't want us to have to every five years do this, but I also understand that there are some looming budget issues before us. And I think there was a question, I don't know if Pete Echeverria was here, what's the magic number? Oh, sorry. The magic number? Is it, if we said we're going to extend it for 15 years with the clause that the city attorney has provided, does that allow us to, in an emergency, still be able to say, well, it's not going to happen the year after?
Certainly. And Beverly Cook, the city attorney's office, I can't say with absolute certainty that it would be a violation of 218, but the closer we get to the position that we're making the exemption permanent, the more it would appear that it would violate 218 if we attempted to revive it. The shorter the time period where it appears that it's a temporary exemption, the better off we are, because there are some cases that the court has decided, where it has decided 218 issues, that even where the city has the requisite language on the books, if we don't utilize it, it's considered as though it's not there and a change in methodology. So we would suggest that a shorter time period that is temporary in nature, as opposed to a permanent exemption, would be the better course to follow.
Well, and as we've talked, colleagues, around the horseshoe here and places, we'd like to ultimately get rid of the business tax in the city of Los Angeles, in a, I think in a manner that is responsible. We know we can't ax the tax next year and fine 450-some-odd million dollars within that year, but looking at a significant, the Garcetti-Gruel or Gruel-Garcetti plan that we had, that this council adopted, which allows us each year to reduce that. I'd like to, and I'm looking at Greg a little bit, because we've talked about this, as with Mr. Parks, my committee members, I understand the problems with the in-perpetuity. I still would like to have it longer than five years. And so I'm looking to both of you for some advice and counsel on this.
I certainly think that as long as it's not in perpetuity, we could make it longer than five years, perhaps 10 years. But I think the longer we go, the farther away, farther we're going to get to the in-perpetuity. Beyond that, I suggest that it would be a policy decision and a financial one, in terms of how long we make that time period.
Mr. Fujioka? I'm sorry, my time has been running, because I didn't ask for it to be stopped, but I'm sure...
If in fact, we can suspend it at any time in the event of an economic, so I'll just call it economic need, whether it's five years, or seven years, or 10 years, I don't think it's very, very significant, because we would only suspend it if we had an economic emergency. There has been, you're right, that once these new exemptions, the tax reform measures were put in place, we saw something very unusual. Everyone was afraid that our business tax revenue would go down, would be much lower, when in fact, it has gone up, and we have seen new businesses come into L.A. Extending it for, if the city attorney is comfortable at 10 years, so that we're not pushing the 218 issue beyond its degree of reasonableness, then that's fine. But as long as we have within the ordinance, language that says we can suspend at any time, because there may be reason, and right now, we have the potential for that reason in the telephone tax, to have to take a very hard look at this. But there is a real benefit, there's a benefit to this, so.
I want to hear from my colleagues on this as well. I want the longest period, obviously, possible, because I think it is business-friendly, and you can be penny wise and pound foolish. And I think we've demonstrated on the business tax reform and on this issue, that we can move ahead. So I'll look to my colleagues, we'll have a little bit more discussion, and come back on what the appropriate time period is. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you very much, Ms. Gruel. Mr. Parks is our next speaker.
Thank you, Madam President. I've had a conversation with Mrs. Gruel. I think the concerns I have is that if we extend the period of time, particularly with the current language that says we can only do it one, we can only eliminate it once, and we have to add another year, we're in effect are putting ourselves in a position that that potential issue that would cause us to lose money could go well beyond one year, and we're tying ourselves to at least the current language of one time during the period. I would agree with the city attorney that for our flexibility, and if our intent is to move forward, that our flexibility, we give a shorter period of time, and that we have the intent of moving forward. I think also, we have to look a bit at our consistency. We've just raised water rates, we just raised sewer rates, we just raised sanitation fees, and then at the same time, we're reducing costs on business tax. And if this business tax at some point levels out, and we are no longer able to depend on the increases that we've seen in the last year, then what do we raise to compensate? I think it's a good message to send, what our intent is, but on the other hand, I think we need to have as much flexibility as possible, that if we have unintended emergency, that we are not going to be put in a situation to where we have gone forward on a tax reduction, at the same time, we need the revenue. So I would think that we moved it from one year to five, with a second year on, with a caveat, but we also said, you only get one time in that five years, and if you invoke that element, you have to move one year, so you're going to get the full five. And so to go to 10 with the current language seems like we're setting ourselves up to failure, particularly when we know that there are excise tax, we have other issues, particularly when we know that there are excise tax, we have other issues, we have litigation, we have a number of things that could negatively impact our budget. So I would hope we would stay with the language here, because I think it's a very tough language that within the next five years, we only get one chance to invoke it, and we gotta add another year, and we have no idea where we're gonna be in five years.
Thank you, Mr. Parks. Mr. Garcetti is our next speaker.
Thank you very much, Madam President, and just to be clear, we can put some specific number down, but we just can't do in perpetuity without triggering 218? So we could theoretically, I'm not proposing this today, put 99 years, and it wouldn't necessarily trigger that?
I think there may be a rule against in-perpetuity at that point. I think we can do 99 years, yes, but I wouldn't suggest it.
Sure, and I won't propose it today. I think that this has been one of the best things that we've been able to do around here. Mayor Hahn really deserves a lot of credit, he was the first person who launched this initially, I think with a year, and then made it to two, this council supported him on that. And then as we've looked at this, you know, and I know we'll have probably a big discussion in these chambers tomorrow about a business-related item. And I went on the Chamber of Commerce Board Retreat, colleagues, just a couple weeks ago, and I've been trying to tell them the story about just how business-friendly this chamber is. And I think this is a good example of how business-friendly we've been. Not only 60% of the businesses not having a business tax anymore, the other 40% seeing that be ratcheted down, but here today specifically, I'd like to see us really do at least a decade. I think that'll give us some courage to be able to say within that timeframe, look, at some point, we may decide just to abolish that, to have the courage and to say 218 concern no longer is relevant, because this is what gets businesses going, but it's really the establishment of these new businesses that helps and has really made our economy strong at a time when that changed. So that is something that I think is, you know, we have differences sometimes with the business community on one or two items, but at the same time, I think this is a very important one to show that this is a very pro-business city, and a council that is doing work at the same time to assist and to encourage the creation of new businesses. So I don't know if Ms. Gruel wants to do that as well, but I would move for the 10 years. I mean, I think that language would be good, strong, somewhere in between perpetuity and five.
Thank you very much. Mr. Smith is our next speaker.
Thank you, Madam President. I'm just reminded of a discussion we had in the Business Tax Advisory Committee about the negative impact this tax was gonna have on the city, and some of us were arguing the point that actually, if you encourage business to be business and go out and be profitable, they'll come here and they'll do that, and that's exactly what happened. In fact, as I recall, our projection for this year on the budget is now $34 million higher in business taxes, because businesses come here, business has grown, it has prospered. And so we've done a very good job, I think, of being very pro-business, and I want to continue that. But a point I want to bring forward is that when you plan, as a large business in particular, that some 25 years ago, 30 years ago, we had a lot of Fortune 500 companies in this city. We had a lot of corporate headquarters in this city, and they're all gone. One of the things they've always said is the business tax was one of the reasons they left here. So we're trying to create a more pro-business atmosphere, but for large businesses, very large businesses, they don't project on a year-to-year basis. They have five-year plans and 10-year plans and growth plans that are predicated on long-time planning. And so the longer we can make this go, whether it's five years or 10 years, the better we are in going out to business and saying, come here, it is an environment you want to be a part of, that is an environment you'll be profitable in, and you have some guarantee that the city will continue to try and support you by reducing those taxes. And so I'm very supportive of five, I'd be more supportive of 10, and, pardon me? You move 10, okay. And the reason would be, what we did in this language is we added Prop 1A-type language, which Mr. Padilla was so instrumental in helping us draft on the state level, and that was if you have an economic emergency, you just postpone it. You don't stop it indefinitely, you just postpone it a year or two. And so if we go to 10, we could always look at the idea that we do it two times in 10 years, then again, maybe like we did on 1A, and say, then you add it to the back end. So that gives you that flexibility you need over a 10-year cycle that you don't get with just five years alone. And so with that, I'd be very supportive of 10. I think we have to look at language, which Mr. Parks is gonna talk about, of saying if we do it 10 years, we need more than one opt-out year, because you will have more than one down cycle in a 10-year cycle. And so if we do 10 years, let's do a two-year opt-out, but with an extension to two years automatic, just as we did under Prop 1A. And I would very much support that, and as counsel support that.
Thank you very much, Mr. Smith. Mr. Parks for a second time.
You know, one thing, if we're gonna go with 10, I'm not as comfortable with the two opt-out as Mr. Smith, because that gives us eight years that we could be in downtime with no ability to correct it. And I think that language is so restrictive that we are gonna put ourselves in a bind where we can't help ourselves when we really should be trying to be flexible and use the money to the best of ability, and have a little trust that we'll continue to renew this. So if we go 10 years, I would hope that we would revamp the language that would not be so restrictive in say, one or two times is the max, and then you have to add two more years, because again, we're having difficulty projecting five years out for the budget and where our structural deficit is gonna be. So 10 years out puts us in some real difficult situation. I would like to support the 10 years, but really go back and maybe take some time and figure out how the other language should be crafted so that we are not putting ourselves in that kind of situation. And so I would ask that maybe if we would, let's see, what is today? If we can continue this to Friday to work on that.
Friday's a holiday.
I mean, all right, Friday's a holiday, or next Tuesday, or something, because that language is important. If we nail ourselves down and say 10 years with language and only two opt-out, we're basically saying we're only gonna be looking at this for two years to recover and seven years or plus that we could be in the same downward trend. And I think we're pleased with what business taxes have done, but we have to realize it's only been one or two years we've seen that growth, and we don't know what the top out's gonna be, or the bottom out.
Thank you, Mr. Parks. Ms. Gruel?
Well, I, I'm not, I mean, for courtesy, Mr. Parks, I may, I don't think I'm gonna change my mind, because I, and I'll look to my colleagues, Mr. Smith and Mr. Garcetti. I like the 10 years, I do think, okay, and the two, but the two-year opt-out, and I know, Mr. Smith, on the two different times, Mr. Parks would like to continue this until next week, and having greater than that one year. I think that our four or five years of experience have demonstrated that we've seen our revenue increase every single year, even with that two years. So I don't know the will of the council, again, I would be willing, again, to have it considered for Tuesday, but my position still stands, and I don't know where the rest of the council is, and maybe we vote on it today or, and see where people are.
I don't disagree in the sense of supporting you on the 10 years. I would just like to get the wording of the, is how we do the opt-out and get Department of Finance and a couple of voices in the discussion as to whether we've just changed an equation for them that we may not be aware of and what may be an unintended consequence. That's all I'd ask.
How about a compromise? This is an ordinance, so there's required second consideration. Is that correct, or unless there's 12 members present?
If the ordinance is amended substantially, then the ordinance will be in first consideration.
When it comes the next time.
Next time.
Okay. I'm looking at you, Mr. Smith, but, you know, again, I think Mr. Garcetti, Mr. Smith and I are fine with the 10 years and two, only two opt-outs.
Yeah.
And, because I think our demonstrated last four years has been clear. Do you want to say something, Mr. Fujioka? You're giving me an eye.
Councilman Smith had a question regarding whether or not this is time-sensitive. I've talked to the Office of Finance, they said, in fact, it's not, because it's their intent to send out information next week stating that the exemption has been extended for next year. Because we don't have to, just for the purposes they have right now, they need to tell people that this exemption has been extended for the next tax year.
And the only, again, the only challenge I have in that, and Mr. Smith and I have talked about this, is he was a business owner, a small business owner, my family has a small business. You make decisions, you know, not just two years out, but five years out, and you're, and that was one of the reasons we've wanted to have that five-year extension, and that if it's just every other year, you're kind of saying, well, what does that mean for me as a business?
Sure.
So what are they sending out next week?
Good afternoon, Eva Bittar, Office of Finance. We will be sending out renewals and a publicity campaign to let everybody know that this is an incentive that's coming their way. So if we knew at least we had one year to go, then we would be able to put the one year in saying that presently, where council is voting on possibly five or 10 years addition. We also have the L.A. tax system that must be programmed accordingly.
If we continue this to Tuesday, for Mr. Parks to get some of his questions answered or convince him that where we're going, Mr. Garcetti and Mr. Smith and I. All right.
Can I just clarify one thing? We're really talking about a two-year exemption, and they don't, they're not eligible again after the second year. All right, so then the five years out is just adding new businesses that get the first two years, and it's 500,000 or less, so it's medium to smaller businesses. I just want to make sure that, and again, if we can do it by Wednesday, fine, just that we've not created language that Department of Finance shows up and say, you put us in a bind that we didn't, unintentional, because the opt-outs are what concerns me, not the 10 years.
And then I think the language we put in there, getting, being fiscally responsible, exists in there, so. Office of Finance, would you have a problem if we went for a 10-year period of time with the opt-out language, and the opt-out language including two, you could not just do it one time, but two times in case there was a financial, you know, catastrophe? You'd be comfortable with that? Is that all right then, with you, Mr. Parks? The department said they would be comfortable with that.
I'm not comfortable, but.
Okay. Well, we go ahead and take a vote today, and then again, it'll come for its second reading next week. If there's something substantial, then it'll be its first reading, and we will consider it second.
And if you vote on it today, and then you're also instructing the city attorney to prepare a new ordinance, or?
We're just changing two things, two numbers. One, instead of five years, it'd be 10 years, instead of one opt-out, it would be two opt-outs.
Well, it probably will be more, Beverly Cook City Attorney's Office, it probably will be more than changing a few words. May I suggest that we take a look at, taking a look at where the city is and exercising that option once in a five-year period? There, since there are two five-year periods, that we craft some language so that there would be the option to suspend once in a five-year period?
Mr. Parks, did you want to speak again?
I would just like to see if we could withhold the vote today and just go to the second reading next week, which gives us a chance so that there's no votes against it.
We could do that administer, I mean, that works, withholding the vote and having just a second reading come back next week?
Then it would be the second reading on the ordinance that's before you with the five year.
Not the amended.
If we were to, if we were to vote to approve this today with Mr. Parks withholding, then it comes over for a second automatic read with an eight-vote majority at that point.
Right, but it would be on the ordinance that's before council today with the five years, right.
Okay, so we'll hold it over, or no, we'll vote on it today with the amendment today. And that amendment, amended, would come next week, amended ordinance.
Yeah, the first reading.
And it'd be the first reading, okay? Did that, Ms. Parks? So we're amending it today, it will then, its first reading will actually be next week.
Right.
Because, because we're amending it today.
Okay, and it gives us a chance to get the wording?
Yeah.
Yeah, the first reading will be next week. So we are voting to instruct the city attorney to amend the ordinance before us to include it 10 years and two opt-outs, and then that'll come back to us next week in its first reading. Okay?
Mr. Parks, did you wish to speak again?
Could we just have the general manager?
Push a button, Mr. Parks, no, I'm kidding you, go ahead.
He did push his button, they just cleared it out.
Okay, I'm kidding.
Could we just have the general manager of Finance here?
Here next week?
For the next week, so we can have that discussion.
So I'd ask for, I'd ask for an eye vote on the amended ordinance.
All right, Madam Clerk, would you please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote? Next item, please. Thank you. Next item, please.
Next item is item 16, and that was called special by Councilmember Zine.
Mr. Zine?
Thank you. The questions have been answered, and the report's gonna be coming back in 60 days, so it's all been satisfied for now. Thank you.
Mr. Padilla?
Thank you, Madam President, and I shared this with Mr. Zine and with Mr. Parks as well, who's chairman of the Budget and Finance Committee. Colleagues, as, knock on wood, my time is gonna be winding down here the next four weeks or so. I wanted to call out farmers' markets as an area that I just know the school district is eager to work with us on. In previous conversations with school board president Marlene Cantor, she's shared with me the idea, the concept of moving a lot of these farmers' markets off the streets of Los Angeles and onto school campuses. It's good for the school in terms of teaching kids and parents about healthier eating options and alternatives, particularly in some of our poorer neighborhoods. And I think it'd be good for the city, too. We dedicate a lot of money to street closures and security and whatnot to be able to accommodate farmers' markets. Some are operated by nonprofit organizations, but some are operated for profit. If we bring them onto school campuses, they have plenty of parking, we're able to eliminate a lot of city costs and street closures, which inconvenience neighbors, that sort of thing. I know that's not exactly the nature of this report, but wanted to take the opportunity to just share that with you all publicly and encourage this to be an item in the conversations in the city, school district collaboration effort and spirit, so, thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Padilla. There are no further speakers in the queue. Madam Clerk, would you please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote?
11 ayes.
Thank you. Next item?
Item number 37, call special for cards from the public.
There is no name on this card, so I assume, Mr. Dowd, is this your card? Okay, all right, would you please come and speak?
Okay, first of all, I just want to say that you're providing public comment on these items, but it's 90 degrees outside, it's like 65 in here, and I waited a long time, and it's cold, so someone ought to turn the heating up, the air conditioning, if that's fair. Secondly, this is a Tom LeBonge Griffith Observatory item. In lieu of a great sensible decision on 5353 West Third Street, Tom LeBonge already got hammered, I'm gonna let him off today and everybody, I'm retracting all my other public comment. Thank you very much, great work, sorry, Tom.
Madam Clerk, there's no further cards, no speakers on the queue. Would you please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote?
12 ayes.
Next item, please.
Item 40, call special for cards from the public.
I believe the person who wrote the card has waived any further right to speak. There's no speakers in the queue, so would you open the roll on that item as well? Oh, close the roll, tabulate the vote?
12 ayes.
Next item, please.
Item 55, call special for cards from the public.
Same as the previous item, the individual who wrote the card has left the chamber. So would you please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote?
12 ayes.
Next item, please.
56, call special for a card from the public.
Again, same as item 55, the individual who filled this card out is no longer here. Would you please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote?
12 ayes.
Next item, please.
Item 59, call special for a card from the public.
I do not have any cards in here for 59. No speakers in the queue. Okay, no speakers in the queue, please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Next item, please.
Item 63, call special by Councilmember Zine.
Mr. Zine?
Adoption of Recommendations 1, 2, and 3, and instruct our CAO, the Commission on Status of Women, Personnel Department, and the LAPD Metropolitan Task Force to report to the Personnel and Budget and Finance Committees on the proper authorities for the staff positions requested for the grant, the fiscal impact of authorizing the positions and administering the grant. That would be my request on 63.
And just for clarification, then you're deleting Recommendations 4, 5, and 6?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Zine. There's no further speakers in the queue. Madam Clerk, would you please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote?
12 ayes.
Next item, please.
Item number 65, call special for a card from the public.
Again, same as items 56 and 55, the individual who wrote the card is no longer in the chamber. Please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Thank you very much. Next item, please. I believe there's been a, has there been a request to send 65 forthwith?
Council has motions for posting and referral.
All right.
And there is an excuse on the desk. Councilmember Gruel requests to be excused Wednesday, November 15th, leave at 11:00 a.m. for city business. A motion is required.
Mr. Garcetti moves, Ms. Gruel seconds. And the excuse is granted.
That clears the desk. Madam President.
Are there any announcements? All right. First, Ms. Hahn.
Thank you. I just wanted to announce this week is a very special week for the Italian-Americans in Los Angeles. We're going to be signing our first sister-city agreement with a city in Italy, Ischia. We're going to be doing that tomorrow morning in City Council. But all who are listening, I want to say, as a part of these festivities, on Friday night at our beautifully restored, renovated, brand-new seats, Warner Grand Theater in San Pedro, this Friday night, we'll be hearing the romantic music of Italy, which is featuring Pietro Quirino and the Calice Mandolin Quartet. And those in City Hall tomorrow morning around 10:30 will get a preview of that music. They'll be playing, I believe it's called the Four Court, which is out on Spring. So everyone in City Hall is in the sound of my voice. Take an opportunity to go down there tomorrow morning at 10:45 and hear what I think is the most beautiful mandolin quartet that I have ever heard. I heard them myself in Italy last summer, and it's something you will never forget. So stay tuned for tomorrow morning in City Council chambers where we'll be signing the agreement with Ischia as our first Italian sister-city. But those of you who would like to get tickets to the concert on Friday night in San Pedro, go to wwwwarnergrand.org for more information. It's a concert you do not want to miss, whether you're Italian or not. I know, it's going to be awesome. It's going to be amazing.
Thank you very much, Ms. Hahn. Ms. Gruel, do you have an announcement? Mr. LaBange, announcements? Mr. Parks, do you have an announcement?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. I'd like to announce that on November the 17th, the 8th District will be having its State of the Eighth, where we'll be recognizing neighborhood councils, recognition for stakeholders in the 8th District, and also recognizing our elementary, middle schools, and high school students who have achieved during the current school year. Also, I'd like to announce in behalf of Mrs. Edna Alawine, she's announcing the first event in her Christmas program will be a opening and blessing ceremony tomorrow, November 8th at 1:00 at St. Lawrence Church on 101222 Compton Avenue. And then also, our Recycling Black Dollars Association will be having their annual Positive Side Awards on November the 16th at the Weston LAX Hotel on Century at 6:00 p.m. And finally, USC's football homecoming rally will be at the Galen Center on Thursday, November 9th at Jefferson and Figaroa.
Thank you, Mr. Parks. Mr. Rosendahl.
I just want to announce that if anybody watching this live right now on Channel 35, make the democracy work. Go vote. Today is Election Day. You get the government that you vote for, so please vote and make a difference and make the democracy work.
Thank you, Mr. Rosendahl. Would you all please rise for adjourning motions? Ms. Gruel, do you have an adjourning motion? Oh, okay. Ms. Hahn.
Thank you. I'd like us to adjourn today in memory of Paulina Bay, who passed away at the age of 97. And she, even before it was popular, Pauline spoke out for women's and civil rights for all people, and her message to all was always follow God's narrow road and not the wide one. She is survived by 12 children, 27 grandchildren, 30 great-grandchildren, who in the past or present, many of them have resided in my 15th council district. And her son, Harry, is the director of Project Gangs for Los Angeles County, is a good friend of mine, was a good friend of my dad's, and a good friend of my brother's. So may Pauline, Paulina, rest in peace. Also, I'd like us to adjourn in the memory of Christina Catherine Calafano, who died at the young age of 16 following a 20-month battle with a brain tumor. She was survived by her parents, John Calafano and Linda Berkovich, her twin sister, Jenna, a brother, Jeremy, and a sister, Stephanie, and many other friends and relatives. Her services were held today at 10:00 a.m. at Rolling Hills Covenant Church. It's always so sad for the family to lose a daughter at the age of 16, and it's going to be really rough, particularly, I'm sure, for her twin. So our thoughts, our prayers, and our sympathy are certainly with the Calafano family.
Thank you, Ms. Hahn. Any other adjourning tributes? Mr. LaBange?
Yeah, members, the beauty of life is family, and family is very important. One time, there was 58 members of the LaBange family that was all there at various parties. And most of my aunts and uncles have passed, but the first cousin has passed. And Carl LaBange Jr., at 73, was my Uncle Carl's son. He was United States Army veteran, served in Vietnam, also served in the Department of Defense as a chief information officer. He was a wonderful man, lived to be 73. He contacted his cancer as a child in his home state of Washington, riding a public bus along with all the workers from the shipyards in Washington. Very rare cancer that just came activated this year. He survived by his beautiful wife, Rosemary, who I ate dinner in their homes, and the years passed, and their sons, Michael, Carl Jr., and daughter, Rosemary. He also, it took great pleasure in his retirement years to read the children in the 5th grade class at the local school, which, talking to my cousin-in-law, many, many of the children had called to say that Carl helped them on the right direction in learning how to read. He was a wonderful guy, and I had the fortune to just call him two weeks ago out of the blue and to learn of his, unfortunately, illness. And I talked to him for a long time as I was driving on Riverside Drive, and he's in a better place, but he, he was a great man. Carl LaBange Jr., my cousin.
Thank you, Mr. LaBange. Any other adjourning tributes? Mr. Wesson.
Thank you, Madam President and members. Today, I stand and adjourn in the memory of Ava Shaw. Some of you may remember her, but she was a community activist and a teen mom. I first met her, Tom, when we were staff members here. I don't know if you remember, there was a dispute in your district, Ms. Hahn, there was a, San Pedro did not want to play Dorsey at Dorsey. And there was a big community debate, and we tried to, anyway, they forfeited the game, which they had, they played for the championship at one of the community colleges. And she's the mother of the great Dorsey High School running back at that time, who changed his name to Kareem Abdul-Jabbar. And she will be sorely missed by a host of friends and relatives, and I would like for us to adjourn in her memory.
Thank you very much, Mr. Wesson. There are no further adjourning tributes. And then just an announcement, quick announcement, that plum will start 15 minutes after the meeting is adjourned. And Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll? Meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much.